There's like.
And then three, approval of the agenda.
I would so move.
The move to approve the agenda is presented. Is there a second?
A second.
I think Mrs. France, the first was Mr. Brisboise. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries. For then approval of the minutes of October 26th, 2020. Anybody see any additional?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
The move by Mrs. Peterson.
Also.
Second by Mrs. Bozinski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay Cheryl?
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. Five then, citizens forum. Any citizens wishing to speak? Seeing none, then move into six, committee reports. Six one, finance and personnel from earlier this evening.
Okay, we just had a few checks. We had a new program called Goal Book for CISA 3, $2,333. We had some advertising expenses to original observer, WRCO, for 1321, 1392, and 1302. We had Blake for some art supplies for $6,596.60. We had our CISA three quarterly billing for $9,383. And then we had a partial bill for auditing fees to Johnson and Block for $3,480. And then we talked a little bit about some COVID things that will be on the agenda later. So, you know, that's a kind of late meeting.
Any questions? For finance personnel. Seeing none, then six two, curriculum from November 5th.
We met on Thursday, the 5th, and it was a a brief agenda, but we did want to talk about, first thing we talked about was the curriculum goals versus COVID. And so some of the things that were being planned have been put on hold just because of all the things that are going on. So the staff is focusing and identifying the essentials. The spring classes, when we went virtual, have caused some problems with moving forward. Dave was here with the math, or to be at the meeting, and said, you know, in math, it's been difficult because there were things that were skipped and not learned. And then also he pointed out, kind of operating on 80% of the time, that that really cuts into to the learning. And so they need to compensate for the lost time and for the classes. And we, you know, we encouraged him and to notify the other staff that we realized that we're going to have to think out of the box, that we're here to listen. So any ideas that they can come up with, we would be very open to listening to. Then the second thing was, how are our students doing? Well, one of the big things is the schoolage and Zoom are inconsistent. And then Kathleen did have, the teachers and several did respond, and we went over, you know, what their concerns and things were, and a lot of it was the inconsistency, the schoolage. Middle school, the concern is, you know, staying in cohorts, that it's getting to some of the kids to not, you know, being able to be with their friends, or move from class to class like the high school. And then virtual challenges with curriculum. And again, it was the inconsistency of the internet working, but then also for some of the classrooms that have the hands-on projects. Like welding was brought up, woods, you know, cooking, some of those things, it's very, very difficult to do that virtually. And so again, we encourage any kind of suggestions, and we realize that everything looks different and is different, and, you know, and then we, it wasn't necessarily right with the curriculum, but then we also talked about the challenges that our staff was having. Kelly, Ron, you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it.
Any questions, comments for curriculum? Seeing none, then six three, buildings and grounds meeting from November 4th.
We discussed the covering of the kitchen in the lower gym, the community gym, putting a, Frank was here, we discussed putting a type of covering over it. There's belief that there is a spосе in that tile, and we've, Frank had done research, and we decided to put a new flooring over it, because if you start tearing it up, it could be viewed as a hazardous waste. And so it was felt to be the best option. We discussed the snowball bids in the, you know, both the church and the in the new gravel area out here, and we toured the building, trying to identify, we kind of went, changed the agenda around a little bit. Towards the end of the meeting, we went and toured the building, looking at things, and trying to identify a location for machine, for an elementary principal, a better office location, which is actually more centrally located in portion, and that space is a premium in this school, and then if we do one thing, then we have to move storage around, and we just don't. As I stated, we, very tight-end space, but we also just did a general tour of the buildings, looked at some of the new artwork that was done. Very impressed with that, and some of the painting and improvements that have been made by the, by the staff, here, the maintenance staff. That was covered.
Any questions, comments for buildings and grounds? Seeing none, then move into seven reports. Seven one, then district administrators' reports.
So we did a family survey on whether or not the families are going to attend in person or virtual, and this was the survey, this was for the second quarter. And as of right now, we only have 29, we counted them, 29 students that are going to be virtual. More the families want to be in-person versus virtual. Out of those numbers compared to first quarter, it's fewer want to be virtual, more want to be in-person. Everybody's a little frustrated with the whole thing. Everybody, we think the families, we can't do this about them. And when the teachers get frustrated, I just say, in 10 years, what we'd like you students to remember, and we want to remember that we have to, you know, let's get through this time. We haven't done this before. Then, this is all about the new digital equity gap data, and I linked the BPI page. We sent out a link to a survey asking specific questions to the education room.
Yeah.
So here are a few, two of the questions. So the question is asked, do you have internet access in your home? And this is yes, and here's 140, and here's 160, and this is no. So we do still have people saying that they don't have internet access at home. And then can the students stream a video of their primary learning devices without interruption? And this says, yes, no issues. This says, yes, but not consistently. And this says, no. So this was up to 90, this is 100 here. So anyway, it's still open, if any parents want to, it's all linked here. I checked it up, and it's linked on the top also, but if you want to take this wonderful link. You can't get to it because you don't have enough internet. Just let us know, we'll send it back. Use this information, or they're collecting it through the state, and they're going to try and identify and create maps of digital access in the state of Wisconsin. Well, it's national, but that way they'll know where the gaps are in the coverage.
Julie, how many families did I didn't, do you have any, how many did not have access?
Oh, the first one, it says, this is zero, this is 20. So I would say about eight.
Okay. Is, they don't have access, they can't get hotspots? What's, do you have an idea on that?
No, it says, do you have internet access in your home? And I didn't come up with the questions, they came directly up to us. So that was it. I can get you, like, the whole survey results if you wanted to, but I didn't want to have to go through.
There's some funding opportunities that may, it's a short time because of COVID, but if, you know.
Right, I think it's planned, eight to 10 households that don't have internet dish and don't have cell service.
Okay.
So hotspot won't work.
Okay, that's what I kind of wondered.
And then there's some that they don't get reconnect, they don't get HughesNet, they get dish, which is expensive.
Correct.
So. And I think it's eight to 10.
Okay, thank you.
And less than 20 kids.
I'm just looking at the households.
Mrs. Shane, I would also like to add that even when there was the two weeks that they were off from school, there were numerous times that there, we have charter here in Sextonville, and I know that there was numerous students in Sextonville that they could not get internet, period. It was breakage during the day. Reese was here at home, and she called me on the phone and said, Mom, there's no internet. I'd have to call the school. Let Barb or Mary Jo know that there were 10 other high schoolers that had no internet. And so it's not just one single child, it's group area. Susan probably can attest to it as well.
Sextonville did seem to have troubles, more so than any other part of the.
There were a few times during that, we're in Sextonville, we have high school through charter, but there were a few times where my kids had to turn their cell data on and then hotspot their computers. So, I mean, if somebody's in a bad cell area, they're not going to be able, so, yeah, that did happen to some.
It was, it was, yep.
And I'm going to point out again, if your family doesn't have usual internet access right now, you need to contact the school, and we'll assist you with most of that, so.
Ron, do you know more? Is there a fix to that charter thing?
No, I don't know about that. I, that's, no, I don't know. And that was one of the concerns, even with curriculum, what, on schoolage, is it on our end, or is it on the schoolage's end? And it sounds like it's on the schoolage's end.
Yeah.
That's all.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none here, none. Seven two, business managers' report.
The listing of reports that have been done, working on training Brooke to do some of the payroll reports, quarterlies and stuff, and then Sarah on some of the other stuff. I just, I left the links for the budget hearing publication, the annual meeting publication, and the hearing notice on there for anybody who wants to look at it again. We do have hard copies in the office. I did put the spring school board elections timeframe on there for anybody who's interested in in that, when, if there are candidates out there that want to file candidacy paperwork and what the deadlines are. We just, been really busy. I just got the draft of the audit. And it went from like 33 pages to about 70 in the last two, three years, so needless to say, did not get it all read. So we won't have our final until I tell them the draft is okay. So the board will be getting that as soon as it's finalized.
Any other questions, comments for business manager? None. Move on to seven three, principals' report, Mr. Lichner's report.
Last couple of weeks has been another interesting transition. It was certainly good to see the in-person students coming back into the school building. The staff have been doing the best they possibly can with the dual role of teaching their in-person students, while at the same time teaching the virtual students. Because of the difficulty of this model, there have been mixed results. It has been a challenge for the staff to find the best way to teach both groups at the same time. There's also been an uptick in absences with some of the virtual students. It seems like some of the students do not believe that attendance is mandatory for all classes. There has already been truancy tickets issued to students and parents of these students. There are more students' parents that are at risk for future citations. They have been notified per our school board policy. I am happy to report that I heard excellent civil discussions regarding the presidential election among students, with students and students and staff. It was nice to see people listening and even considering all sides of the discussions. As we go forward, there will be adjustments that the staff and students will have to make, no matter what model we choose. I am confident that we will overcome any challenges that are presented, as long as we stay together and focused on the task at hand.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Seven four, then, principals' report, machine's report.
Highlight of the month. So we had 91.5% parent-teacher conference participation for the elementary school. The support of our families shows in our student successes. On Friday, November 6th, the Russian County Health conducted a flu clinic for all students at Yipka. The number of participating students was down significantly from recent years, but many still took advantage of it. Teachers continue to collaborate with each other in regards to lessons, schoolage, technical issues, and so on. From Mrs. Kleimer, Red Ribbon Week went virtual this year, October 23rd through the 31st is National Red Ribbon Week. It commemorates the sacrifice made by DEA agent Enrique Camarino in the war against drug abuse. K-5 students were given a copy of the history behind Red Ribbon Week, along with activities to focus on making healthy choices and focusing on their future. Videos were also shared on topics such as choices, drug education, brain development, and refusal skills. With staff in and out, scheduling takes great deal of time each day. Students returning to in-person, who had been virtual, also offer challenges, and we make space considerations to ensure proper social distancing.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, then seven five, curriculum.
So just a kind of a recap of what Linda had said. Elementary is adjusting well. The in-person virtual is challenging for them, though, going back and forth. Completing work is difficult. Middle school are getting squirrely and need frequent reminders to wear their masks properly. Teaching virtually is challenging for both teachers and students. Distraction, small screen to teach within, connectivity. One teacher commented, you would like to uncohort the middle school. Virtual challenges, again, connectivity, students' knowledge of using the different sites and documents and so on that are online. Teachers are realizing that only the essential will be taught and learned, as there just isn't time for other things. Schoolage is often down, doom freezes periodically. Very difficult to teach both in-person and virtual at the same time, as neither group gets the best of the teacher or instruction. And although in-person is best, balancing it with health and safety is very difficult.
Any other questions, comments?
So. In the event it comes up, I'm going to bring it up. The 75 tablets are in, they came in Friday.
Ooh.
So Adam has to get them all.
Who's guarding them?
They were in my office for a while.
They're going to high premium.
Yeah, they're here.
Thank you, Adam, forgot about that.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions, comments? If not, then eight, old business, eight one, discussion possible action on learning. So eight one, discussion on possible action on passing time.
I honest to goodness cannot remember why I put this down as an action item, so I apologize for that. Before we go too far, though, I just wanted to, I pulled up some data. So this is Sot County's COVID case. They have 2,328 confirmed cases, 1,885 recovered, but 433, we have to remember, we're in both counties, are still active. This is the dashboard from today at 10:30. I was going to pull that up for.
That's Russian, that's Russian.
Yeah, I know, Richmond Center, pull it up for today. So we currently have 215 cases. Active are 215, sorry, 582 total. But, so that was 11 and 9, and then what I did is I pulled them by month, so you can see that July, September, October is here, and November is only short because we're only nine days into it. This is the eight cases by age range. Again, we want to make sure we look at data, so 0 to 9, 10 to 19, this is most of our students here. And then this is pretty much even across the board here for everybody else.
So Julie, what does it say for active cases at Ursa County on that?
215.
So it's at 228 as of the end of today.
Oh, okay. Like you said, I put 10:30, and I was going to blow, but I'll go catch that and put it here, so we have it.
But they're way behind on the test results, aren't they?
I'm just going by the dashboard.
So this is a 14-day trend. So this trend happens to be from September 28th to October 18th. And you can see that the line is kind of flat, but rising, and then the next one, you can see it's kind of flat, and then it's rising even more. And this is the past 14 days, it spikes, and it's still rising. So I guess I'm just telling you that it's not flat. They're rising from these last three graphs. Because Ron, I made sure that we have current data. Questions on the data? I just pulled it, plastered it here, so.
No, can we talk about the passing time, actually?
Oh, yes, definitely. But honest to goodness, I was like, I can't remember what happened. I'm so sorry.
I've just heard from a lot of kids that it's a problem, like they're, and maybe the staff can speak to that, that they don't always have enough time on the virtual days to get into the room before the class starts. And it becomes, it eats up the minutes that they have then. Wednesdays, I think that's, I can only speak about my own kids, Wednesdays are tough for them to get from class to class to class, so.
So it's not real passing time, it's virtual passing time.
Right, yep.
The other days are fine, because they have the three minutes, like everyone does in the hallway, so, yeah, you're like, Wednesdays.
Yep.
Yeah, we did take a, we had a meeting with the staff, and we took a vote on whether or not we should add three minutes or keep it the same, because the biggest complaints we get from parents is that we keep changing the schedule. And the vote was that we kept the schedule the way it was. That was the vote from the staff.
I think we'll have to, I mean, that, to me, that, they have to be able to use the rest of the stuff in between classes as well. I mean, I think then we have to be cautious of how we're treating the kids tardy or not, in those situations. Especially little ones. Eight one one, I think, with our kids tardiness. Yes.
I know what their time is like.
Yeah.
I give them a little bit of time, but when I get kids that are consistently showing up five minutes late, it's a challenge, then we do, but, yeah, otherwise. I mean, I think they've been really gracious as far as, like, the teachers go with the attendance part. A lot of times I'll try to let my kids go like a minute earlier, so they have time to switch back and forth. And it might, I mean, yeah, we kind of have like the staff department for that, sometimes it's like, hey, guys, so tight, I'll be right back. And I've had kids that ask, can I go back? Yeah, go ahead. So I think the teachers have been pretty gracious about this, you know, not understanding that there's, that takes time, and that's a big deal.
Yeah, looking at the attendance, there's not a ton of tardies. And if there are, it's, like you said, it's guys that are, or girls that are tardy all the time.
So we don't need any action on this.
Okay. Any other discussion? And eight one two, discussion possible action on uncohorting middle school.
I just wanted to bring it to the attention, it was mentioned. I don't agree that we should uncohort middle school. I think it's working. I know the teachers, I give them a lot of credit, but they're tired of pushing their carts around, and it is difficult to go to eight different rooms every day. I give them a lot of credit, they're doing an excellent job in the middle school. High school doesn't have to go on all parts. Some of them have to go just for like first hour, or this is barren, this hustle, and down, to pick up kids quite often, and we got that figured out, but I think we should keep them in the middle school, hurts, but we shouldn't have a discussion about it, it's my preference.
The reason I put it on there, and the reason I thought it could be done safely, is because since I've been here the last six years, technically always been in cohorts. The same group of kids all day together. They just used to move from place to place to place to place. And I thought if we switched to it, like they're moving again, that breeze time that are passing the hallway wouldn't accumulate the 15 minutes in one day.
The only thing, the rooms, I'm just throwing this out, the rooms that have to be sanitized between, just like the high school do.
Like the high school do. But I think we could do it in that three minutes. The other curveball would be setting up the rooms to fit everybody. I think it could be done, it'd just have to think outside the box a bit.
And another item that just came up today is that due to more parents wanting kids in-person, there are some space concerns now. Some of the high school classrooms are not quite big enough, so we dealt with it at the beginning of the school year by moving some teachers, both in the elementary and in the high school. Now the teachers and the kids are used to going there every day, so we don't quite have enough room in some of the high school classrooms to have all those students be in that classroom for either that period or a couple periods. And again, teachers have been very gracious to, I don't know, Mr. Fabro has a class across the hall, because his one, his class wasn't big enough for one class. But again, that adds to a teacher's angst and stress to have to move. We might get to the point in some of the classes where we actually have to do a hybrid model. Sorry, I'm not used to running this machine. We, the, at Manhattan meeting today, I talked about a hybrid model. Potentially reducing the number of students in the middle school and high school just because of the inability to space. And some of the examples come from colleges, UW-Richland, was that it, Kathleen, UW-Richland?
UW-Plattville is the mother, you know, the mother company of Richland, and so they went from six feet social distance to nine. So classrooms at the campus that were set up to hold 40 kids will be. And that was starting, I believe, this week, and they're going 100% virtual after Thanksgiving. The professors have the option to either change your classroom now to virtual, or do a hybrid until after Thanksgiving.
And we haven't gotten any notification that that's going to change, that we now have to stretch the kids out, I mean, nine feet versus six feet.
No, that was, that was just a platform decision.
Right, that was a platform decision. So, but, you know, we always want to look forward to, if we're going to have to change, we should be planning to do this, and not just spring things on people. So we had not created a complete hybrid model, because we were considering 20% of our students at home virtually, and only 80% in the building, and we fit everybody in. That was hybrid right there. But if we have too many students coming into the building, we might have to go to a more hybrid model. Potentially having kids come on certain days of the week versus other days of the week. We haven't quite gotten there yet, but we're getting close in a couple of the classrooms, so we talked a lot about it, and we don't have any decisions yet. But I just wanted you guys to be aware of that.
So like, and every other day, say, A through L comes in, and then?
Yeah, okay, something like that.
Yeah, okay.
And all the other schools, I shouldn't say all, but most of the other school districts have had that since the get-go. We just were able to really do it, with a lot of me walking around and measuring, and a lot of the teachers putting marks on. and a lot of the teachers putting marks on the floor so that the kids stayed right here and then we can keep, get this many kids in here. Like I said, we switch a couple of rooms around so that we can get more students in. Because if a teacher had a larger class, they'd need a larger room.
I'm the teacher that has too many kids in my classroom. In my 10th grade fourth hour class, I had three virtual students to come back to my classroom. I now have 17 kids in that classroom. We are not spaced out where we should be. There's not enough room. And the two kids that are going to my classroom that are not virtual, both have COVID. And now we are out for the next 14 days. And when they come back, I have no space.
More questions, comments?
So as we talk about this, the learning modalities, before we go to lock these. Julie, we talked today about our numbers. So Julie, would you share, like, what our, what our statistics are in the, in house? And I think that attests to what we're talking about.
I didn't create a slide for that, I just wrote it down. So right now we have less than 1% of the staff out, 1% of the students out with the diagnosis of COVID. But since school started, we've had at least 90 people quarantined or sick. It's 20, almost 20% of our students have been out or teachers, it's all staff. So, and mind you, that's for the whole quarter. So it's not like they were all out one day. It's been ongoing. Today, we had, we sent notes home today. We now have four elementary classes that are out for the next two weeks because of.
And one pending.
And one pending.
A different class pending.
Now, when you say 20% over the first quarter, you mean, I think you said it, but you mean have been quarantined because they were exposed or have been sick? Not all 20% have actually had COVID, right? Okay, just making sure we got that.
And we have been airing on the safe side. So it's, you know.
So when she means that, so when we call Rose, Rose says, you know, this is safer. So then we go with what's safer. You know, but again, as I'm going home tonight from town, I get a call. I got a staff member that's got kids in Valley. She's not quarantining, you know, so now I gotta shuffle before tomorrow to find, find a teacher. So it just is continuing to, there's probably eight or 10 that are on the list and waiting for test results of students.
And then I found out today I'm a contact, I'm a contact. So as soon as I find out that person's test results, I'll find out if I'm virtual or still in person.
So it just increases.
Any other questions? So going forward on the, the space things and like with, just one second, please. Going forward on the space things. What do we, are we looking at options, changing rooms or doing things like that for like, with the ones that were, you know, over, that student numbers have come back?
Yeah, so for example, we know that, we looked at the programs, who had fewer students? So literally, if we, if we have to stay with these numbers, Mr. Klein has only eight students that hour and his room fits more people. So Mr. Klein could go onto Mrs. Wanter's current room and Mrs. Wanter would go into Mr. Klein's or that hour. But see, in between the room, between the classes, they're supposed to clean the tables off.
Is his room, is his room is big enough to socially distance 17 children?
Yeah, he's actually got a really big room.
Twenty, I heard twenty.
Bye, default.
Good to see you back there.
Yeah. And we haven't even talked to you guys about this yet because we just, it's still not quite there. And we knew that she wasn't quite to the point yet for when those students return. I have another one I can't remember.
Well, the bigger thing we're looking at is with the trending and everything else and the, the issues that we're having trying to teach both sets of students at the same time. Would it be better to just go with one module? And looking at what we see, what we see happening in our area with, I think we checked today, there's four schools that are closed until at least December, I believe. And again, with the thought that you got Thanksgiving coming up and Christmas and everything else. So we asked some of the teachers to maybe give you their input on the difficulties that they have teaching the in-person and the virtual at the same time. So if anyone would like to speak to that, any of the teachers.
I would love to. It's, it's difficult. It really is. You're juggling both groups and I really feel you're not giving one of the groups all your full attention because you are in the virtual group and they have questions and you're trying to focus on that. And then someone in your in-person group, that's the restroom, has a question. You're really torn between these two models and trying to get the best attention to both these groups. And in addition to having virtual and in-person in my room, I have some study help kits in my room because of our distancing issues that we have to have them separated. So I had less students for those few hours. So I have some study help kits. Now, study help kits are good, but that's just one more group. And that's one more set of kids that need your attention. It's extremely difficult. And I really, really welcome all of you to come in. You can, you know, come with me during the day and, you know, come sit with me and, and see how it is. It's very difficult and I'm really, I want to do a good job. And I really feel like I'm letting down some students because I don't know if they can see the board, if they can see through the Zoom meeting. And I'm trying to give, you know, my best efforts, my in-person group. It's, it's difficult, it's, you know.
When you add that technology issues with the virtualness, and that's a whole nother thing. Like today, Mrs. Pink, that uses my room during my prep time and I was in there doing some stuff and she had two students that had to go virtual today because they're quarantined. She's done the entire time just trying to get those two boys to understand how to get into Zoom, how to shut off their mics, how to find the document she wanted them to do. They got nothing accomplished except for that. So it does become a challenge, especially when we take kids who are now quarantined, who haven't had this whole quarter to learn how to be virtual student and try to work with them. And then you got this whole classroom of other kids, you're like, hey, be quiet, guys. I'm trying to give you some, you know, get this to work. Okay, guys, you really need to quiet down and you just, you can't do it. It's just, it's very, very difficult. And the more students you have on virtual, the harder it gets. And then if you have kids that you really need to be watching GoGuardian too, all of a sudden, you're in three different places because you're trying to pay attention to these, you're looking at GoGuardian, you're trying to pay attention to the screen and somewhere in there, you're supposed to teach. But it is, I mean, I'm glad we have the model for, you know, that's what we decided to go and put those who want to face to face and those who want to do virtual. I mean, I'm gonna go with the flow of what to do, but it is difficult.
I have a confession to make. I forgot my seventh hour Zoom chance for the first time today. I got so busy teaching, I had so many questions. And I got back to my desk and I checked my email and there is an email. This is Wanter, we've been waiting to get in, I'm finding that, are you there? And it's just like, oh my gosh, how could I get my?
Even when they're in the, in your class, it's hard. If they don't speak up, that's the hardest part with virtual. You have nobody on virtual that speaks up. You have no idea if things are working, not working for the kids. And some of our virtual kids won't say a thing. But then you got so much, will say something like, hey, you forgot the screen share or hey, we can't see this. Then that's fine, but then there's most of the kids just, are just like, ah, whatever. I'm not gonna tell them anything or say anything because who cares? So you don't know what, what's going on on their side. You think, ah, everything's going fine, they're not saying anything, everything's good. Then it turns out they couldn't see anything for the last 20 minutes or they're not there.
My mic's been on mute the whole time.
Right, yeah.
I think again, just in this discussion we're having here.
This is Paula.
It highlights the difficulty of the decisions that we have to make. You know, some, you know, we say, you know, in-person is better, but it makes it more difficult. But then you hear the problems there are with, you know, the Zoom and things like that. And, you know, don't think that just because, you know, we don't necessarily quote unquote side with you, we don't hear you, it's just, you know, when you're here, you're hearing weigh all sides. There's, you, you can't make everybody happy, you know. And, and I know when I'm trying to make decisions, I'll guarantee it's never just one thing. And I think it's unfair, it'd be just, it'd be just like us saying, you know, in another situation of, you know, this person made this decision just because of one thing. You know, I've heard that before, well, sports went out tonight. You know, I know in my decision, and I can't speak for everybody, but when I make a decision, I'm never considering one thing. There's many multiple things, you know. Like I've said many times, you've got the teachers, the staff, the students, and the parents. You know, so those are, those are things that we have to consider on all of these things. Again, like I said, don't think that, oh, we just don't care or we're not doing it. It's just, you've got to weigh all these different options and just, you know, try and make a decision. And at this point, it's, it seems like no matter what we do, we can't make people happy. Go ahead.
All right. I'm not a teacher, I'm a, I'm a grandma and I'm mom. Okay, so I picked up on the teacher frustrations because I hear about them. My day was this today or my day was that, has been working that, just worked, you know. And I have to be very proud of my daughter because I think she's an excellent teacher and they're damn lucky to have her between them. But I thank for dancing around the elephant in the room here tonight. We looked at the statistics from Richland County, we looked at them in Sot. We don't have a fence around Sot at Richland County. In the last 10 days, the cases in this country have gone from 900 or 90,000 to over 100,000. The numbers are going up exponentially. We've hardly had any testing in this area of our state. We have absolutely no idea how many people have had COVID. You don't have any idea how many kids have COVID in this school. You truly don't because most kids are asymptomatic, okay? People from Ithaca go all sorts of places. They go all over the state, they go out of the state, they bring it back. They go visit families, Thanksgiving's coming up, Christmas is coming up. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to that are having Thanksgiving. Their relatives, it's saying, no, it's not. I've had COVID. Carrie's had COVID, it's been in my family. We got sick the end of July. We are still sick. I don't know how Carrie manages to do it, she doesn't. It's difficult. COVID doesn't go away after two weeks. Many, many, many people have long-term effects. And we talk about our kids. It's taking little signals that very, very few of them. Okay, chickenpox, we think, all right, you get chickenpox with your kids, it's no big deal, right? And you get to be 50, 60, 70, what do you get? Shingles. We don't have any idea what this virus is doing to people. We don't know what it's doing to our children. We're finding out that a great many people, a majority of people who get this have heart problems. I've never had an arrhythmia in my life. Since I've had this, my heart's been getting beats like crazy. Carrie's heart's been getting beats like crazy. It's not uncommon at all. I have some of the highest hills in Richland County. I know I'm an old lady, but I can still hike the tarmac, it's okay. I now get winded walking up to flights. This stuff is serious and I see people poo-pooing. I thought it's no big deal, kids don't get it, it'll get over in a couple of weeks. We all put our pets in the sea. You need to be pet and it's gonna get worse. This winter is gonna make what's happened so far look like it's me. It's all going like crazy. And I don't know what your political beliefs are or what you think, but COVID is not a hoax, it's serious, it's terrible. And I don't want to see a teacher in intensive care. I don't want to see a teacher dead. I don't want to see a grandparent dead. I don't want to see any of you dead or sick or, or feeling the way I do after three months. It isn't worth it. I want you all to really give it a lot of thought. I realize this isn't ideal. What's happening in school is terrible. But 15 years ago, you believe you had. The system you have now, it would have been no school at all. Your kids live in homes the way it used to be in the 30s and 40s when people got quarantined. I have brothers and sisters who are 20 years old and I grew up in the 30s and 40s. They said they didn't go to school for weeks. One kid would get measles, the next one would get measles or they'd get scarlet fever, they'd get this, they'd get that. You know what? They all grew up, they're all fine. They had successful lives, the world didn't, yeah. This is a 100-year pandemic. And I look around at people and I think to myself, you're all being so damn selfish. If people had acted in World War II the way they are during this pandemic, think of the things that your parents and grandparents gave up to get this country through something in the past. And now we get P O because somebody asked us to wear masks or to wash our hands or to give up a couple of things that we think we won't live without? I don't get it, I truly don't. This is life and death and illness. And that is the most important thing, is taking care of our families, our neighbors, and our community.
Yes, but sitting at home being scared isn't taking care of family or neighbors or our students.
They won't feel right if someone in their family isn't around anymore. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Who was on the computer?
I think Amy, was that you?
Nope.
Who is it?
It was Sativa.
Sativa, speak up, please.
Sitting at home being scared and keeping our students locked at home isn't doing any justice for anybody either.
Thank you.
Is there volume on that? And I think that Julie has turned up at a different meeting.
The other thing on, on chat, Jill Plonka had mentioned how the Richland Hospital is doing, they're understaffed, getting close to be killed with a capacity. Adam says staying safe is not being scared. And then on a side different note, Juan Miller reports that with their experience with virtual, it's been going very well. Mrs. Penfield has been doing an amazing job.
So I also asked Rose her recommendation. And she typed this up, sorry, I need a lot of copy. So last week, the percentage of positive tests in Richland County over the preceding 14 days was 27%. So of those getting tested, quite a few of them are getting. So nearly one in three had positive results, the staggering number. The number of Richland County residents hospitalized and those who have passed away due to COVID-19 related reasons continues to increase. It is expected that the upcoming holiday season will be greater risks of exposure which may negatively impact Ithaca schools. In light of these concerns, I would encourage Ithaca School Board to consider the option of full-time virtual instruction as this will help to decrease the risk of exposure to both students and staff. We, we really talked about it a lot in cabinet today and the admin team actually would, would like to recommend that, that we, that we close. Maybe not immediately.
It's not on, it's not on agenda.
Well, it says learning modalities.
It's not an action.
Discussion and possible action on learning modalities.
In what capacity, Julie, how long is the recommendation?
So we're worried about Thanksgiving. We are worried about the hybrid. We don't have enough room for all the students. The suggestion was to go virtual, the first day would be Friday and reopen December 7th.
Isn't that directed?
Oh, it's one week after. It's one week after Thanksgiving for a reason.
Gotta watch for, you know, if you monitor yourself, you should be able to, you know, family will have left and, you know, if people stay home and monitor and.
So when you're saying Friday, you're saying they'll go this entire week in person still?
Correct.
Then it starts on the 16th?
No.
No.
She means start.
Well, we could do it that way. Well, we could do it that way, but because of the fact that we are, we are already, we already have quite a few students out right now. So the suggestion was, and part of this is to allow the teachers time to get ready again. We'd like to actually close Thursday, have no school for anybody, give the teachers that day to work, and then go Friday, November 13, virtual.
Okay.
And then, as you can see, that's 13th, that would be two full weeks, including hunting season, Thanksgiving, and time to recuperate after Thanksgiving.
Sarah Nelson responds, there is no school for kids on Monday, the 16th, that is correct.
So we might as well just wait until the 17th.
Wednesday before Thanksgiving was also scheduled originally as early out, even though now it's gonna be a virtual.
Right, this was scheduled as an early out.
So Julie, did your admin team talk about what Dave brought up at the curriculum meeting? That was the virtual instruction somehow extending, you know, how he said when you're only on for that little bit, and if a student asks a question? And I think Melissa kind of pointed that out as well. So has there been any talk about when it's virtual, doing more of a block schedule so that a class would have a longer time?
Yeah, we did, we did. We went to the Wednesday schedule, right?
Yeah.
What if you did every other day? Hours first through fourth, and then the next day they had?
Yeah, we could do that, but again, that would take time for us to set up.
Right, I'm just saying, it would give them more time, but yet they'd still be getting all their classes.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be, it'd be about, it'd be about the same time, because you're missing that.
If you did like a two-hour first hour and a two-hour second hour, and then you didn't have them the next day, you would back down to an hour.
Right. We also talked about some of the staff that brought up, would it have been possible to pick a day that if students wanted to come in to do some of the labs, that they could? Now, they wouldn't be penalized if they didn't want to come in to do the lab, because they'd have it set up for virtual. But, you know, some of the classes we have, it, it's just better to do it in-person. So we had a couple of different ideas that we were tossing around on that.
Now, Richland Center is closed for quite a longer time. Does anybody know why that is, or what that, where that recommended?
I do. Richland Center is closed because they do not have enough substitute teachers. It is not because of COVID. That is fact. Mrs. Amy and Elaine Stafford with substitute teaching, and she was out of a job because they do not have enough subs, that is why.
Yeah.
Summer?
Why they went longer.
Summer?
Hold on, just one second.
Somebody else is talking now, hang on.
Jeff said that the reason they decided to pull off was to get through Thanksgiving and then Christmas. They, they figured if you brought them back, and then you got Christmas right around the corner, you might have more pieces and stuff, so they just decided that...
Well, that's my question, as to why would we come back and then risk everybody getting sick again, and then go back into Christmas?
Well, the way I look at it is we could have two and a half weeks of learning.
You can always revisit it. You know, I mean, you can always... The Richland Center said that, and there's, they could revisit and possibly open before January, at least according to the reports.
What was the, Julie, what was the December the 7?
December 7. Everybody would return on the 7th. So it would be one full week after Thanksgiving, and that's time for everybody to either get over or get infected, and then know not to come on that day if they're sick. Somebody else was gonna speak up, I don't know.
Sarah, did you want to say something?
Kathleen, it's Sarah Nelson. I was just going to share, but Mary Beth shared exactly what I was gonna say, just about the reasoning behind why Richland Center closed till January 11. Thank you.
The Jill Plonka comments, switching back and forth every two weeks is burning teachers out.
That was the reason for my question, isn't, I mean, how does our administration feel about that?
We pretty much, it was a, it was a, almost an even split, even with three of us, but because we thought about in the first part of January, but as we know, we always want the kids in school while we can, and we thought if it's popping up, then we could also have a new extension. And we really wanted your input on that thought. I think we're mostly pretty good with either way. And depending on what school you look at, some do it till January, and some do it till December, so.
Well, and then what's the criteria to revisit it? Is it cases of the county? Is it, we're not gonna be here, we're not gonna know what's going on?
Yeah, that was what I said about the last time we reopened, we didn't know what to say.
Well, how does the staff feel about that? Can I get...
Yeah, we didn't mention it to staff, so what are you guys' thoughts on that?
I kind of got lost in the shuffle here. What, where are we? Like, go with virtual or in person?
So the suggestion from administration, Kyle, is that we would go virtual, and I guess it sounds like we're gonna have to do it on the 17th, only because then we can get everything set up. Students are already off on the 16th, but I think it makes more sense to start next week. Everybody would have some time to get ready. 17th would be the first day of the virtual, and that would go all the way through hunting season, Thanksgiving. One week after Thanksgiving is the last week of November, and the first week of December, and all students would return on the 7th.
I follow now.
Okay.
Can I answer your questions? Yes, I did. Could I?
Are you notified when one of our students comes sick from their, from their house virtually? Or did it just come back, and all of a sudden you find out all these? I know at least three students that were in my classroom, told me that they had COVID bug.
Oh, no, they don't always tell us everything. Um, we do, if they have symptoms and they tell us, then we make them go home along with siblings, and then we require a negative COVID test for the whole family to come back in.
Or not, not necessarily, or 14 days?
Or 14 days of quarantine, excuse me, 14 days, they should be quarantined.
Other questions or comments?
I guess I don't understand why you would close on the 17th. Why, why wouldn't you wait till the 23rd if you think about closing? But I guess my, my bigger point is, what I'm hearing tonight is that kids are not participating virtually, and you don't know if they're learning or not. Schoolology is inconsistent, Zoom is inconsistent, we have students that don't get the internet. We should stay in-person as long as possible. Another comment I heard tonight is that all the hands-on classes, you don't get that with virtual. But nobody has mentioned anything about the mental health of the students tonight either, and I think that's very important. So we should stay in-person as long as we can. And in the past, we've mentioned not enough staff, and I completely understand that perspective. If you don't have the staff to teach the kids, then you'd have to be virtual. But unless there's a true reason to go virtual, I'm not in favor of it.
I guess I never understood, and I've been questioning this with Richland Center School District too, we put all of these safety measures in place for a reason. We, kids are wearing masks for a reason, they're sitting six feet apart for a reason, we have middle school quarantined for a reason, and that's so that we don't have the COVID spread in school. And as far as I know, there, that there had not been, it's not been a school-spread disease, this has been a community-spread disease, because what we are doing in the schools is working. All of the safety measures we have in place are working. And so if we don't have the numbers of COVID in school by, like, I'm agreeing with Shelley, let's let the safety measures that you have worked so hard to put in place work.
I don't think they're working well.
Because we don't have school spread. We don't have a school outbreak, just like Richland Center, we don't have kids in school. They're getting it from, from the community, so they're gonna get...
Those students come into our classrooms.
Right.
From the community.
Right, but because they're masked, and because they're sitting six feet apart, you're not, you're not getting the spread in school.
In my class of 17 that I have now, the two kids that I have off for COVID were both back in the same room.
Well, they're probably, if they're friends, that maybe they're, they're doing things together outside of the classroom.
No, they're not friends.
And, and I'm sorry, and that, that's the first time I've heard of, of school spread that of all the schools that I've been talking to, you know? You know, Richland Centers had the staffing issues that we've had, because if one, if a, you know, if a student gets it, the whole classroom shut down, you know? And, and other schools and other counties, and I've been talking to a lot of schools, because I just really want to know, what, what are other schools doing? They're not shutting the entire classroom down. They're shutting, they're, you know, if a kid gets it, then the, the kids that sit around them have to be quarantined, but they're not shutting the, the entire classroom down. So that's another question I have, is, is why is it different? Why is it different here than it is everywhere around?
Maybe because some of those classrooms are a heck of a lot larger than our classrooms. You're talking about lot, lot, you know, larger numbers of people.
No, the, the schools are same-sized districts as we are, they have the same, it's not like they're, they're diff, you know, Ithaca is, you know, built kind of the same as what a, a lot of other schools are. These are, there's schools that are same-sized as we are, southwest Wisconsin, but, you know, the desks are six feet apart. Allow the, I was trying to say, allow the safety measures that we have in place to work.
I need to share on the Zoom over here. Wanda Miller, just from our point of view, we have a child at daycare attending down, and because they keep going virtual and then in-person, the child has been pulled due to emotional issues because of the back and forth. She now is focusing issues when it comes to her schoolwork. Heath Crandt reports, it makes more sense to run virtual through December, or even 10 days after January 1st. The kids and staff are probably more, suffering more with hybrid learning. Oh, Wanda says the child is kindergarten. And Jill Plonka, my guess is 80% of the staff wanted to go virtual on the last survey, my guess is since the situation is worse, they probably feel the same way.
I know for me, one of the big, big things is, you know, this is the first time that Rose has come out and said that she would recommend closing. That is a...
We've talked about that on every occasion.
At every occasion, we've talked about that. And it's, you know, and you, you listen to all sides, and you listen to, you know, parents that have problems with, you know, you hear about the, you know, it's harder learning virtually, they have all those issues and all those problems. It's not easy decisions.
Some more comments. Steve on Zoom, teachers cannot, this is from Paula, teachers cannot have a day off? I tried to be with my son, and I had to call into the school three times and not focus on my son and take a complete day off. Teachers, keep going, and soon we will start dropping. Be careful with the mental health comments, we are not equipped to help mental health issues. And Amy Gassett says, it is more difficult for students who have ADHD to go virtual as well.
Have we lost any staff members because of...
We have one that's currently out through at least Thanksgiving.
I mean, staff members, have any staff members left our district?
Not related that I know of.
Kathleen?
Yes?
This is Amber Fargan. We were talking about this a little bit, Marty and I, and we were talking about possibly if the children had to go virtual, the high school had to go virtual, but the concern is that some of the high schoolers don't show up, or, or they're at risk for not graduating, could we make it so that those students would come in and be in-person if they're at risk for not showing up at all, or not graduating this spring, and then have a very small amount of children who are, or kids, teenagers who are coming in? And then the kids that are able to handle virtual, I don't know how that would be determined, but that could be, they could be virtual then. And I hear the mental health issues, I completely agree, it's a, it's a huge concern. Maybe can we think outside the box and have some social hours for these kids that are virtual? Or, I don't know, just even social-distanced social hour, I don't know. Can they use the gym and watch a movie and be spaced out? Just what can we do outside the box? What are our resources that we have? And how can we develop a healthier mental health setting for them? Just some ideas.
Thank you. One other thing I would like to bring up, and I've just been saying this lately too, is something that just dawned on me, so where are these elementary kids going if they have to go virtual? Because mom and dad have to work, mom and dad have to pay the bills, so they're probably going to Grandpa and Grandma's. And that's what we're saying, that's what we're saying, COVID hits the worst, is the older population, but we're sending these, these kids to Grandpa and Grandma's house. And I know also that they're also going to daycare, and I was in a Zoom class today, and I had students that were in daycare, and daycares are, are having more kids than what they should, because they have to go somewhere. So if we shut down, then, where are these kids gonna go? They're gonna go to Grandpa and Grandma's, and then they're gonna go to daycares, and there's gonna be a lot more kids in those places, too.
Another note from Angie Young. I think the teachers are doing a great job in helping support the students being virtual. I just want to give a shout-out to Mr. Urban, who has made himself available for kids like mine, that really enjoy having him at their beck and call on, all day long on Zoom meetings.
Well, I think one of my concerns is, because I have, I have heard it from staff, and I've heard it from some students, and Kami, you were on the, the committee all summer long, and unfortunately, I don't think we have followed through with the masks. We have some kids who don't comply, and they're still in school. And my understanding was that their just was, that was not gonna happen. If you were gonna be a smarty pants, or think you didn't have to, for whatever reason, that then you would go virtual. And I think that is, I think some of the staff is maybe afraid to speak up on that, and I, I feel bad about that. But I think we relax in that department, and I think that's where some of the, the being real uncomfortable, and then it isn't safe. And that is in our middle school and our high school. Kids that are older and that should be able to assume some of that responsibility.
Well, I can tell you that anyone that's been brought to the office that isn't following the rules, if it happens more than once, then they are, they do have consequences, and we...
Yeah, but the consequence was that they were to go virtual. That's what the board had talked about, that's what had been decided.
Yeah. Well, the understanding was that if they continue to do that, and I will tell you, I have not had many at all sent to me.
Jill Plonka chimes in, also social... Jill Plonka chimes in, also social distancing is not being followed either. I walked into the commons the other day and fifteen kids were all piled on each other looking at their phone.
Yeah, I know. My son came to school, we're doing virtual. My son, son came to school for some, for pep band. He said in, some of the kids inside. And it wasn't, it wasn't anybody's fault. Just the kids were inside and they didn't have their masks on. And, uh, you know, there were some smart aleck comments where they would cough or damn. Oh, sorry. I'll try not to get you sick. You know, that kind of thing. Yeah, there's, it's not, it's not being seen. I'm not saying that there's any, no teachers, like, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying kids are kids and you can't watch every single kid all the time. So it happens.
And we actually predicted that we would get lax. You know, as time goes on, I think it was last weekend, I put on email and said, you know, we have to have masks a hundred percent of the time. But again, I mean, I can walk by a room and have kids just got their mask like this. It's not properly worn. But, you know, if you're in the middle of teaching, you don't always see that, whereas I do, because that's what I'm looking for when I'm walking by.
Especially when their focus is divided between the two, you know, in-person and virtual. So sorry to pick up on all the details. But that's the point of being six feet apart and masks too, that if you're not masked, then you're six feet apart and that's supposed to, you know, you know, the, the whole, uh, how masks started is when you can't be six feet apart, then you should be masked. But if you're six feet apart from somebody, then you're fine. And I'm, I'm not, not saying that kids should not wear a mask and be in the next. I still, I totally think that they should be in the room wearing a mask and be six feet apart. Um, but I'm just saying that, you know, like I was in a kindergarten classroom the other day and a kid came back from fire and got a drink and took his mask off and I didn't even notice he didn't have a mask on until 10 minutes left. And I looked at the kid, I'm like, man, there's something different about you, but I don't know what's different. And I didn't, and I didn't see it, you know, and I should have just, you know, so I get it. But they were sitting in, all the kindergartners are sitting in their desks and they're six feet apart. So that should be, you know, so I, I guess I wasn't too worried about it. I think we're still learning more about it and I think the science is still out on how effective the six feet thing is. Obviously, blood flow's going nine feet and there's been studies in hospital rooms where they filter the air out four times an hour and they can still pick out 12 feet away enough virus to infect people sometimes. So, I mean, I think the science is out still. They're still learning stuff about it, but.
But I also feel if it was so super contagious, I would have had it six months ago. And that'd be fantastic.
You can get it more than once. I've had it twice.
Well, what are you doing that? You're getting it twice.
We're not gonna get in an argument. We're gonna keep, keep, address the whole group and, and we're not gonna have arguments back and forth. You have a comment, make a comment to the group and not back and forth between you two. So. Any other comments, questions?
I got one. Is it possible for the elementary to be in school and here, Mr. Clank said that there's still, you know, still with the virtual, they're having problems if they're learning or if they're not learning and stuff like that. But seems like the high schooler kids and the middle school kids are older. They should be able to, you know, they should be able to be, get on the computer and figure that out. Whereas your younger students, their parents work and they cannot be left alone. You know, so is it possible for them just to come to school and middle school and high school be virtual?
And Julie, how many elementary classrooms did you say are out, going to be out now? Four? Four. So see, that's, you know, and I don't know what is easier for parents, you know, to actually have it planned or to have this that just keeps happening.
I know they gotta work.
Right, right. We, we know that.
I don't know. This, this is Amber Fargan again. I don't know who that was that just announced that idea, but that was, that was another part of the conversation Marty and I had last week. And we think it's a, I think it's a great idea to keep the younger children co-horted in their rooms. And just as a parent of multiple children at different age levels, I will be the first to tell you that uh, I have to sit down with my elementary child every moment of the day for Zoom that she's on. But the boys being in middle school and high school, thankfully, they can handle it on their own. And that's exactly what I was talking about before, is kind of those students in the high school that are not co-horted and they're moving about. How can we keep them separated virtually? And then, and then keep the ones that are co-horted going to school and the parents of those little ones can still go to school as well. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
On chat, Julie Thompson says, new masking recommendations are to wear a mask even when you're further than six feet.
I was just gonna say, people always throw middle school in there. When you take a, think about sixth graders, they're still only 11 years old. So by time seventh and eighth, that's more applicable to what we're saying, but them sixth graders, they're still pretty little. I mean, you can turn just, I'd rather them come, I guess.
Questions, comments?
I guess part of it too is, you know, like, I don't know if it's Shelley or Kami, they talked about it being community spread. That just tells me that our community isn't doing a due diligence of wearing masks when you're with people that aren't your immediate family and staying home. You know, and they, it's on the news. The hospitals are filling up. Stay home like it was in March. Stay home. Not to say we shouldn't be in school with kids, but in the community, that's where it's getting to our kids and our staff. So, you know, we have, the people have to stop. Or we won't be able to get together. That'll be school spread. So, you know, it is, it is a community issue and we're part of that.
So we, we cohort from eighth grade on down.
That's the thing. We keep talking about recommendations and we have a recommendation. I know, counting that we it's difficult because there's absolute, it's a razor's edge between the two sides. It's very difficult.
Yes, Summer, and I think the other thing, you're exactly right on that. And we've tried to get some data as far as what parents would like, whether or not they'd like it planned or not planned. I think there's been four different days where we were within one positive case because then they were going to have somebody right next to them that we would have to close. And, and really, you know, that's kind of the thing you have to think about too. Do you think it would be better to keep going as long as we can? Or is it better to give the, the parents and stuff a chance to plan? I mean, Kathleen, Julie and I and the staff, we're, we're here every day anyway. So we're just trying to see what's best for everybody else.
So some more comments. Jill Plonka, taking Amber's idea further, if we have high-risk high schoolers, we could have them set up in the gym and zoom into their classes from there. Same with the high-risk middle schoolers. Amy Gassett, at Gassett, people do not realize that it is the necessities that are needed. Pete Krantz, all virtual, otherwise it's a self-defeating proposition. And Juana Miller, planning is nice. We get extra kids at daycare that we have to adjust to.
Other discussion?
Kathleen was just hearing some of the comments about going all virtual versus young kids virtual. I guess, um, like you were talking, Amber was talking about the older boys can manage themselves, the younger kids can't. So it's taking the burden off the parents, off the daycares, off whoever's trying to teach them. You know, because that's really where, that's really where the burden shift needs to be, right? It's not, you know, it's moving elsewhere. It's moving the burden from the teachers. I'm trying to do two things at once, do the parents. So the high schoolers and the middle schoolers should be able to manage themselves at this point. But I think that's, you know, um, one of the points that I think some people are kind of missing is that it's just kind of shifting around. It's moving, it's just moving the issue.
And I guess I've heard the same, like similar comment that older siblings are not doing their schoolwork because they're helping the younger siblings.
And then again, no matter what decision comes out tonight, there's four elementary classes that are home for sure for two weeks. You know, so that, you know, no matter what, that's, you know, so you've got, what is that, a third? That are already out.
Some more comments on chat. Katie Burnley. If parents want students in school, they need to discuss the importance of wearing masks and being six feet apart. A lot of days I feel like I spend as much time teaching as I do telling students to stay apart and wear masks properly. I can attest to that. The students are getting more combative attitudes towards masking and distancing daily. So if they refuse, and again, the board has said, we will, they will go home and be virtual, period. I mean, Amy Gassett, plan and it should be for the entire school. Sarah Nelson. I agree with Amber Fargan that if we can let the younger kids come to school, it helps really stress off parents, daycares, grandparents and so that parents can keep working and we keep grandparents safe.
And one of the things that we talked about in curriculum was with bringing on some of this extra help. And, uh, Mr. DePond was the only high school person at the meeting, but he did say that it's, it's difficult to implement a helper in, into the high school. At least he felt that way. Where if we continue with that plan, um, you know, those people should be able to help alleviate some with the elementary. How do you feel about that, Kathleen? Yeah, she nodded.
Can't just nod, you guys.
You know, and there's quite a few high schoolers here tonight, but I mean, with bringing on that extra staff, I mean, you're, you're so specialized in what you teach.
Well, it's just gonna be tough because you're gonna have to spend time with that person, telling them what to do. You might as well do it yourself.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what was, was pointed out that it's, it's much harder to maybe assist that staff with, um, some of the help that they need.
Other discussion?
Julie Thompson, I'm exhausted with the constant babysitting with masks and distancing. Today I told six students twice each to put masks on in 30 minutes. I'm tired of being the heavy. I correct more than I hope.
We have adults buzz in and they don't have a mask on.
Why aren't these kids being sent to the office? That's my question. It seems like an ongoing, why aren't we enforcing that? If that's the case? If we have this habitual.
Many times, just a quick thing, a lot of them like to wear their mask underneath their nose. And so you say, put your mask up. Or some of the boys are wearing these turtle, that tight mask that are constantly sliding down their faces. And then you have to tell them, put your mask up. So it's not blatant in your face, I'm not gonna wear my mask, like saying, it's just like, guys, you gotta get the right kind of mask on, stand over your nose. Putting it over your mouth isn't enough. You've gotta have it over your nose. And it's just, it's not, it's not something that you go, okay, this kid's being insubordinate. You're going to the office for this. It's just, hey, you know, and they get, it's the fact that I made about breakfast too, is at, at the end of the second hour, they all can go and get their breakfast and bring it back to my room. Well, you can't eat breakfast with a mask on. So I have, I have, that's my class of 20 and luckily 11 of them are virtual. So I only have nine in my class and I'm able to spread them out fairly well. But I still have nine mostly teenage boys with their masks off eating breakfast. I keep mine on, but they're not protected. And I have brain ulceritis, so just to be sure.
Other discussion?
Can I say something? It's Sarah Bailey.
Yes.
I just wanted to talk about the four classes that are quarantined now for two weeks. And I wanted to mention that not only is it the four classes, but I now have a sibling of a student who is in one of the quarantine classes. So now I'm already receiving emails that that family will choose to quarantine the sibling who is in my third grade class. And so this continues to be the revolving door, ongoing problem that we discussed at the last board meeting when the staff expressed, uh, that we were hoping that we would extend the virtual learning. Eighty percent of the staff expressed this because of that sinking feeling that many of us have. And I know I personally received an email today from an elementary staff member who put in their resignation today. This is going to continue to be a problem, like I said, and it, it will spill out into the other grade levels as classes are required to quarantine due to exposures. Thank you.
This is Angela Tudo. I'd like to add that I feel like that's a big voice that we're missing tonight is that of the teachers and the stress that they're under with all of this and what is best for them. They're the ones teaching our children. What do they need? Thank you.
I'll chime in. I just think that we're trying to have two conversations that have nothing to do with each other at the same time. Personally, I know two people who have been very seriously affected by COVID. They're older than I am. As long as my neighbor growing up, he's on oxygen. He might be on oxygen for the rest of his life. There is a health issue. But then I also realized, and I've said this on multiple occasions, that, you know, I teach the kids that are the ones that have learning disabilities to start with. And there's a reason why we have this building. And if virtual learning was the best model for learning, we wouldn't be here. So we're trying to, we're trying to balance those two things out. And so I don't think, at least from my perspective, you know, we can have all of one thing or another. You know, there's gonna have to be a balance that's gonna have to be made here. And you guys have a tough decision and I, I certainly am aware of that. I would say that during the virtual learning, I had some students that did well. I've had some students that have not done so well. Part of it is the technology and part of it is, you know, we just don't know if they're engaged or not every day. It's a tough call, I guess. I'm concerned about the health of my colleagues more so than of my own kids. But I'm also concerned that, you know, obviously if we're virtual for a long period of time, that's gonna negatively affect our students as well. So maybe I just said a whole lot of nothing there, but I'm concerned both ways. I can see both sides of it. I can see, I can understand as a parent, you know, why you want to be in person. I'm kind of lucky enough that I've got somebody who's getting paid to watch other kids in the home and they're able to help me with the virtual learning. Not everybody has that. I understand that as well. But if we didn't make investment in, who would be? But, you know, we did make investment in, we did make investment in virtual learning to make it better than it was. I think it, I don't think there's anybody in here that would say it's not as better than it was. It's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. You know, I guess, I guess it's a tough call both ways. And I just hope that no matter what you guys decide, that, that we decide as a group to at least understand why.
I'm gonna chime in with Matt. So my sister is at UW right now, she's in her second week. She's 57 years old, does have pre-existing conditions that she's been managing with medication, but that's her reality. We have a staff member who is still on oxygen, walking with a walker, trying to regain her strength to come back for Thanksgiving is what she wants to do. I look at our staff and, you know, most, my elementary is a bunch, are very young overall, but, you know, I'm in that age group. Most people here are in that age group. And that has to be considered. As I told my neighbor, we got in a little argument about it. If the teachers aren't available to teach, we can't have class. And we're, you know, they talk about closing because of staffing. The, so, we have some really good substitutes. But if a teacher cannot teach, we cannot have that class. We don't have qualified teachers in the area that are waiting on the wings to come in and teach. There's just things to think about. It is best in class. But we're in a pandemic and health is more important.
And we have brought up mental health too, and I think the teacher's mental health is also very important.
I agree. And so would the students if their teacher were to get sick.
Other discussion.
I was, there's a lot of talk about splitting it here or there. I just kind of didn't think this discussion's gonna happen this way. I guess as far as, I'm just talking for middle school. I don't feel confident making any kind of recommendation or comment without talking to the rest of my team first. That's just kind of how I feel because I'm 28. So that's just my two cents.
Some more comments on chat. From Pete Prans, if you split older and younger, you haven't gained anything, you're still hybrid, and the staff doesn't need that additional burden from the parents. Us parents need to do our part to make it work. From Jill Planka, how can students learn from teachers who are stressed out and exasperated? Do any of you have to do a job partially in person and partially via Zoom at the same time? For example, Steve, are you grading apples while at the same time telling someone how to pick apples via a Zoom meeting? It's a silly example.
Actually, can I address that? Yes. Absolutely. Every day, I'm on the phone. The other day, I had three Zoom meetings while I was loading a truck, taking emails, and trying to do everything at the shed, so. An absolute yes. And I resent being singled out.
I just think it's a very stressful thing, no matter what profession you're in. I was driving a bus for Richland Center, I had to watch out for my health because my kids come here. You know, where you only have a handful of students that you take into one school over there, when you used to go to all five. And then I go from that job right to my other job, where is the port of Richland County, where all the germs are? And that's Walmart. And I see people come in, no masks, you offer them a mask. They blatantly tell you off right there to your face. And what do you do? Nothing. So I can't have the authority to do that. You just want to say, I'd have words with them, but you know, I'm not that way. So I see it from every level. There's even staff students that come into Walmart, they don't have their mask on, you don't wanna say anything. So I've seen it there. The stress level's really high for parents as well, because I have several parents there that their kids go to school, whether it's Center or Ithaca. They can't handle it teaching their kids because they're young ones, you know? So I see it all across the board, everywhere. No matter even where my husband works, you have a guy that calls in all the time. So he has to pick up Slack. Some days he don't get home till eight o'clock, and he starts at four in the morning. So I see it, every level of every profession. I got an IRN in the hospital that works, I, I haven't seen her forever because she's constantly working. You know, so it's in every professional aspect, no matter where you're working. So I see everybody's point of view. You know, and I got a kid that goes to Southwest Tech, he hasn't been out there for a month because they're virtual. You know? And middle house, middle school, and I got a high schooler again. So I understand everybody's aspect of it. That's my two cents.
Other questions, comments? Without a motion, we will continue the way we are.
I'll make a motion that we go virtual on November 17th and then return on December 7th.
And the motion's been made that we go virtual on November 17th, returning on December 7th. Your second.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we go virtual on November 17th and return on December 7th. All in favor, signify by saying a roll call, please.
Mr. Brisboy.
No.
This, Mrs. Ferriens.
No.
I got, we got a mark piece, yes and no. Sorry, okay, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manny. Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Glodinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Eight, one, three, then, I guess there's, is there any to talk about that?
Oh, I think we still have this week in person.
Right.
And then, yeah.
Eight, one, three, then discuss possible action on locker use for high school students.
I'd like to address that. I know at first we're, you know, we're concerned about students lingering in the hallways, we're concerned about students gathering. In total, they, again, they've only got three minutes in between classes. My biggest concern is some of these kids are lugging 30 to 40 pounds worth of stuff. And, I mean, their book bags are heavy, and they're taking them from classroom to classroom to classroom. Again, if we keep policing the hallways, we only, they only have three minutes, so it's not like they're gonna be doing a lot, a lot of lullaby gagging at the, you know, lockers. But I would sure like to be able to see those students, be able to go to their lockers at least a couple of times during the day. To, so that they're not lugging so many pounds of materials around every classroom.
I'm Alyssa Sprecher, I'm the student council advisor, and our student council has met about this issue, and they're very passionate about it. And they've been talking to the student body about how they feel about it as well. And she is one of our members, and she's here tonight and just wants to address the board about the, that tech issue.
Yeah, so we've had two meetings where we've talked about this, we've actually come up with a little bit of a proposal. But first, I just kind of want to show you, this is my backpack for the last three hours. It's heavy, very, very heavy. And I feel like as adults, you, and parents, you appreciate this, my posture has gotten so bad. But yes, this is my backpack for the last three hours. I also have an instrument that I carry around, especially when we're going home for Wednesdays and we're on the weekend. I know there are several kids who have bought expensive, heavy duty backpacks that have broke. There are also kids who are looking around more books than I am, who have stickered textbooks, et cetera. Our proposal we have kind of come up with that we want to ask you guys about, and this might not be something that is talked about until next meeting. It's not implemented until we come back. But split our grades up, so whether that be underclassmen, upperclassmen, and then after odd hours, a certain group gets to one of their lockers. After even hours, a certain group gets to one of their lockers. I feel like that would space it out. I do believe, I do think after talking to a lot of students that our lockers are spaced out enough where there's juniors by sophomores, seniors by freshmen, et cetera. And even if that isn't the case for a group, I know that I buy a lot of freshmen, I feel like they're, we are high school students, but we can take some responsibility and make sure that we are spaced out during that period of time. That's all that I have.
I'd just like to interject that they have told me about that proposal, and, and I recommend that we do that also.
If anyone's picked up their backpack.
I don't want my pack going out. So you would recommend like every other hour, basically?
Yeah, they actually have it written down and how they would do it.
So for example, it would be the underclassmen who go after first hour, third hour, fifth hour, and seventh hour. And then the upperclassmen would be after second, fourth, sixth, and eighth. That will obviously be able to run the eighth hour. But I feel like that would spread out the time enough. Obviously, we'd still probably be carrying backpacks around, but they wouldn't be as heavy. We'd only have about two hours of stuff worth in it. And even if we, if you guys would like to space that more, and maybe only have those groups go twice their locker today, I still feel like that would make a huge impact on what we're carrying around and all that.
And the kids who have thigh and happy carry their thigh and clothes too, because they can't hit the locker at the moment. Or the thigh and shoes, I guess.
Yeah, and to be honest, the, the students have done a really, really good job as far as not going to their lockers. And I, I think they've shown that they deserve this opportunity, and I think it would work out real well.
I'll make the motion that the students are allowed to use their lockers at administration's discretion. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to allow students to use their lockers at administration's discretion. Roll call, please.
This is Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manny. Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Glodinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy?
Yes.
That really started, we have to go back.
Thank you, Tina.
Thanks, Tina.
Not a problem.
I have four noes somehow on last vote.
I was a yes.
Okay, thank you. I knew that we missed one, and I apologize for that.
Hey, that covers that, right?
No action on cohorting because we're gonna leave them? Cohorted?
Is that right?
So there's Paula Bowlen comments, what about middle school cohort, and can they have lockers too?
Did you say high school?
I didn't, I said the students can't use their locker.
The agenda states high school.
Yeah, it's high school students for the lockers. Middle schoolers don't need them if they're cohorting because they're just leaving all their stuff around the desks.
They're in one room.
They're in one room all day, so they don't carry anything anywhere.
But the question on that was going to be with, you know, bigger coats and boots and things like that. Now that it's getting colder out.
We're not gonna get any.
And it is filling up around their desk.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a safety hazard sooner or later.
It's, it's filling up around their desk, and we are like jumping over things if we have to go help students closer in that. Like, we're stepping over band instruments, we're stepping over their piles of books, we're stepping over Kleenex boxes, we're stepping over everything that's laying around their desk. So it's kind of keeping us away slightly, but it is.
We appreciate the information, Miss Bowlen, but we can't take action, but it can be put on for the next meeting, if that's December or if there's a meeting before that. So we'll, we'll put that on as a discussion for that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? And nine, new business nine one, discussing possible action on bills and balances. Tom said bills and balances of total receipts of $271,961.29. Total disbursements of $659,422.47.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And move Ms. Peterson, taken by Ms. Mosenski, to accept the bills and balances as presented. A roll call, please.
Mr. Manny.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Glodinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens?
Yes.
Mr. Manny, Mr. Lewis. Sorry, move the line. That's the problem with two of us typing in there at one time.
Are you, are you good? Yes.
Yes, those are our guesses.
Yeah, you're okay, you got everything?
Thank you.
Okay. Then nine two, discussion possible action on winter sports. Nine two one, discussion possible action on Wednesday night on the scheduling.
So I, just so you know, we have, I did get guidance from, so last time we were together, I referenced a study about how kids aren't catching COVID for sports. And this is a, a study that the University of Wisconsin School of Medicine and Public Health did. And basically, they're saying rather than state fall sports did not lead to higher incidence of cases, they're stating that over the study period, participation in fall sports does not appear to have any conclusive relationship to COVID case rates or incident among 17, 14 to 17 year olds in Wisconsin. They're saying that they correlated incorrectly. So this is like a 16 page document, you go right ahead and read all of it. But they, they pointed out a clause in the study and all that kind of stuff. So it's kind of a, a, a reading what the first study said. So I just wanted you to know that that was here, it's just for your information.
But the gist of it, Julie, is that it, they don't recommend it.
Correct.
Okay, so read at your own, but that's the gist, is they're saying that it shouldn't happen.
So the first study said it was fine, and this one doesn't show.
This one just.
It refutes the, it doesn't, they didn't do a new study, they studied the study.
They said the data was summarized, showed really incorrectly.
Right, so there's flaws to the study, it's based on self-reported, non-validated survey. It's the method for validating cases that's specified, the participant days are not defined, you know, there's all of these major analytical flaws, you know, there's all of these. But the gist of it is that they, that this, they're saying that that study was basically incorrect. And we used it, I used it last time to say.
Let's not reference it.
Yes.
So the, the item we're on now is discussion possible action on Wednesday night games schedule. And we'll move into discussion on, on the sports.
Is Zach on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
The 9.2, there's no action, not, there'll be any action on that?
No, we're, we're discussing that now. We were kind of digressing. That's my point I wanted to make, that that will come in the next, next discussion. That right now, the discussion is Wednesday night game scheduling. And Zach, refresh us, this, this idea was brought up by athletic directors before it was put in front of school boards, right?
Correct. It wasn't that we want to do it and we were planning on just putting it on the schedule, it was just like, we'll use basketball. Hopefully, we can all get 14 conference games in, but they cut the season short by a couple of weeks in the start of the season and a couple of weeks in the back of the season. So now we're trying to cram in a bunch of games in the winter. Maybe we'll get lucky for wrestling and basketball, and we won't have icy roads, cold weather, and snow days. But, and then it won't be a problem, but if we have a really, really awful winter with cancellations, it may be tough to try to get in the dual wrestling meets and the basketball games without having that as a possibility.
You know, have other school boards weighed in on this other than the athletic directors that discuss this?
Some, I'm trying to think of the conference ones, only a couple that I know have had it last month. The rest of them, we're planning on bringing it up this month.
So Zach, is it still the WIAs recommendation that one of the last things that I read that there'd just be like one game a week, that there are so many days in between?
Just for wrestling, they want six days minimum in between duels, basketball. There is no minimum.
So I, am I hearing you right back that it's like last case scenario, much like a tournament game would be if it's scheduled for a Tuesday?
Right.
There's lightning, so they have to play Wednesday?
Correct. It was just like, right now, the schedule's done for the winter sports, high school wise, with no Wednesdays. But if we have a crazy winter with weather, trying to get games and dual meets in, it gives us, as athletic directors, the option to try to have a completed season. it gives us, as athletic directors, the option to try to have a, a completed season.
So my recommendation is that we don't allow Wednesday night games. Again, that's just my recommendations. Mrs. Thompson did email all the board and she feels very strongly on protecting Wednesday nights for needed family and religious education.
I second Ms. Thompson's recommendation because of families are pulled so many ways and that is one night. We, we allow Sunday afternoon and evenings. And Wednesday is been traditionally, ever since CCD came off of Saturday mornings, that we would kind of hold that for family religious nights.
I understand where Zach and, and the athletic directors are coming from, but I also don't know why we would be discussing this now and not wait until we get in that situation like we would any other year. You know, why address it now? Any other year, if we have all kinds of cancellations and stuff and we get in that situation, we address it at that time in a kind of emergency situation, is, I don't see the need to authorize it now when, you know, we haven't, you know, it's no different than any other year. We could sail through and not have any problems. We could have, you know, ten canceled games.
Can we, can we move to table it until we need?
Just take no action. I mean, it's always an option any year. I mean, we've had years where, in the spring where we've had to do that, finish the seasons and stuff like that. But there's, you know.
Does that help Zach to just, can you bring it up if we get, I mean, I know we'll all know, because there'll be icy roads.
Yeah, that's fine. And then obviously, this, you know, being year two as AD, it wasn't brought up last year. I think it got brought up again too, like what if a school's shut down for sports for two weeks because of COVID? And they're in first place in the conference and now they missed their games and, or dual meets and how do you quick make that up to so you can still be crowned a conference champion or to get your games in? I think, because I'm, I'm just guessing, because it wasn't brought up last year, at least not at the conference level. So I'm guessing it kind of was playing off of possible COVID cancellations, but it, it makes sense to, to table it too.
Can I get a comment to this?
Yep.
Um, I guess, you know, representing in Queens, Eastville, it would have been really nice had the, our church been involved in this discussion prior to being brought to board. You know, and I, I can't speak for the other two churches that are here, but if you do to get to the point where you have to have, or you think you might need to make a decision, we'd like to be involved in discussions. Because, you know, we feel strongly about that Wednesday night. Need to be protected as well.
Yeah, and we appreciate and understand that. And I think the point I was making was that the athletic directors did this and they didn't, you know what I mean? They, they discussed it in that athletic director meeting before it was even at any boards. And so then it's brought up at a board meeting and, you know, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't brought up at the board level to begin with. It was brought up at a conference athletic directors association, so.
I understand that.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, yep. Heather Muckler, if it's not safe for kids to be in school, it should not be safe for the kids to be in sports. Julie Thompson, double headers were played for conference volleyball games in the Southwest Conference, River Valley, Russian Center, Dodgeville, Platteville. Those girls' teams were all in contention for conference titles. Double headers are always a possibility before using a Wednesday.
Any other questions or comments on the Wednesday night schedule? Okay. If not seen none, then nine two two, uh, boys' basketball, uh, Ridge and Valley guidelines, nine two two one, discuss possible action on middle school boys' basketball.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was, I mean, we had discussions about middle school and high school separately, so I thought I'd kind of break it up when you're doing questions.
What are the Ridge and Valley recommendations? Does Zach want to tell us about them before we?
Zach, are you on there?
It looked like you. Do you guys know what the recommendations are?
I was muted, sorry. I was, I was talking with. The, uh, yeah, they're linked. Uh, there's, you know, the, the coaches, a bunch of the coaches and some athletic directors met a couple of weeks ago. Um, there's a long list of guidelines. I think they are linked. Oh, this past week when we met as ADs, we kind of cut them down from four to six pages down to two, but the, the concept for basketball is very similar to volleyball in terms of, you know, what we're expecting with masks, you know, the two spectators. JV fans can come and attend, but then they have to leave once the games are done. You know, obviously, with the masks, coaches, officials, student athletes, you'd be on their benches wearing them. I mean, the one thing, Julie sent an email today and we didn't really have anything past the end of the month, obviously through the month of November, because of the, the current mandate at the state level. They'll be definitely wearing masks. I mean, I'd be shocked if it doesn't get extended, which in that case, because it's an indoor event, masks will be required. We did have this, uh, it's still on the bottom of the first page in the link, just how to possibly deal with handing out a conference championship and, you know, in terms of ratios and trying to get that in. The second page, it talks about just game day transportation and when you should get there, uh, what we want to do with equipment usage. You know, with hand sanitizer, somebody cleaning the balls, um, what worms will look like. You know, that's something like the post game, no handshake, and then we want to do, whether or not we should put it on the clock or not, but the one of the things at the bottom, it's a little bit different, roughly ten minutes after the game, the entire school be cleared, not just, so there's not going to be any, you know, which has been typical, game ends and let's, you know, talk with friends, people from other schools. It's like, no, the game's done. People need to leave the building immediately so we can begin the, the cleaning process, especially with the gym also being a classroom, um, with having, you know, the next day that needs to happen. But pretty similar, I mean, just some, some of the rules are a little bit different, but that's, we're still going to use the jump ball. Um, some conferences won't for the sake of that, but, um, yeah, I mean, to me, that, it's like I said, very similar to volleyball and I definitely think, you know, as a, as a school and a conference volleyball went very well. Obviously, the, the WIA just concluded their state tournament in volleyball, um, so that went, went well, kind of using the combination, combination of, um, rules that the WI sent for recommendations along with having these coaches and AD meetings to kind of come up with their own, you know, policy.
How about the middle schools, Zach? What are they talking about with that?
Well, for basketball, I mean, we haven't done too much with it, just because it's, you know, boys, uh, girls' basketball would start after Christmas. I mean, I guess technically, maybe they might start practice over Christmas break, but otherwise, they start right when we get back. If we have middle school basketball and then the boys' team would start, be like mid-February and then end in mid-March and then the, the week before, middle school football would start. And again, that's all dependent on if we have the sports at the middle school level, um, with them being co-horted and then stuff, obviously, then making, you know, putting them together for athletics kind of defeats that purpose, but that's something, I guess, probably part of the reason why it's on the, the agenda for discussion as a, as a separate sport. Um, I know one of the things I was talking with Matt about the other, the football game, at least, whether or not we have middle school basketball after um, Christmas, but, but beforehand, since the old gym should be available, it would allow for possible JV and varsity practices to practice separate for spacing. It would allow, let's say, if boys have a game and girls are just off, the girls would have their practice in the old gym. That way, the same thing with the locker room would be clean, nobody would be in it. We wouldn't have to quick disinfect it before like a road team would come in. Like, that gives us that option, at least, you know, before Christmas, because middle school's not going, and obviously, if you don't have middle school basketball, then we could use the old gym for keeping our numbers distanced at the high school level, you know, pretty effectively, I think, because we're lucky that we have two gyms and that gives us that option, but.
Doing the motion to stop, because of the using the guidelines, is that what works? At the high school level at least. Any way of giving middle school the, the, where fresh, more basketball day just a month? Because right now, it's kind of looking like girls is going from, well, you know, we can start after Christmas, you know, it's January, whatever, second, third to mid-February, so that's about what, five weeks? If the boys starts mid-February, goes to mid-March, it's only a month. Is it possible to give?
If we, if, no, uh, if we have the seasons, those are the schedules. We have to end middle school boys when we do, because it's the last possible game will be on a Friday and the following Monday, middle school football will start.
And they have to, they have to, um, practice at separate times. There's no way of pressing over to have middle school boys and middle school girls both start in January and or, or any crossover.
No, and, and like I said, the schedules are done. The game is really, we're playing essentially the same number of games. They're just condensed into a couple of weeks shorter season with how they're drawn up for, for the two of them. No tournaments, because we're not having multi-school events, just like there's no tournaments for high school level either with multi-schools coming in.
So boys' bas-, middle school boys' basketball starts Wednesday?
Uh, it's like February, right around the fifteenth, I thought I have a calendar in front of me, um, and then it goes until.
We don't necessarily have to make a decision on middle school right now, because we definitely have December's board meeting before the girls start.
Right. And then, yeah, girls would start. I mean, it depends on when the practice date would start. The first game for girls' basketball is the week of, like, Monday's the fifth. It's like that, that, I think maybe the eighth might be the first game on the schedule.
January eighth.
No, no.
Yeah, so that would be like, so for girls' basketball, yeah.
Middle school, girls' basketball.
Correct. So both of them don't, don't have anything till after the first of the year.
All right.
Some comments on, um, chat over here. Paula, Bowlen, if it's safe for the high school to play, then it should be safe for the middle school to play. The students keep asking. And Julie Thompson, why is locker room use now acceptable? What was the change in discussion there? Was there mention of locker room use? I missed.
See, they're not using the locker, they weren't using the lockers. Locker room was right. But all the girls were in the girls' bathroom.
Exactly, all together.
All together, changing and it's like, okay.
With no doors, no, nothing.
I think the light, as for the locker rooms, David, correct me if I'm wrong, David. Um, we had our conference coaches meeting. One of the big things that I know that they talked about was limiting the amount of time that we're in the actual locker room. So that may mean that some of us, the coaches, will have to change our pregame routine a little bit more than what we normally do.
They're wanting our JVs to come pre-dressed and ready to roll. And when the varsity would still get their time to change quick. Yeah, that's the whole point on the game day anyway, when we're going away. Is that they got the JV that come pre-dressed. Varsity can still have their, like, a little bit, and it'll be shorter than what that normally is.
And that's also where that ten minutes comes in, because they also are saying, no shower, not that you see your clothes and get on the bus.
I just bring up the middle school, because it just seems like the hits just keep on coming to those four middle school kids. I want to talk to some seniors. I know, I know, and, and, but high school is getting their, and, and I realize it's condensed, because it's not as much as they were, but, you know, middle school doesn't get to talk with their friends at lunch or anything like that, so. But I mean, I, I don't know. Concern over the mental health of our middle school was cool. Because I definitely see it in the middle school kids that are around.
Other discussion on, I guess right now, the discussion would be on middle school boys' basketball.
What I'm hearing is we don't have to make a decision, so we can table it, right?
Actually, table.
Yes, okay, more than table.
I gotta, I'm just gonna say something, because when you're talking middle school, but at sports, you got three, you're getting on wrestling here too. And I mean, you know, that's probably, we should be talking about high school sports first and then middle school. I understand what Kami said about middle schoolers not, they're missing on that a lot. It seems like the high schoolers should go first. We should probably be discussing all the high school stuff first, then discuss the middle school sports. Because that's, otherwise, you're just gonna be going back and forth. You get to the wrestling, where you guys, basketballs can have all their stuff, and wrestling's not gonna have anything left. And that's just the way I'm feeling. That's what I'm hearing right now.
I just made a motion to table, so we're not talking about middle school.
Well, okay, but when you say that, I mean, so when's the, when's the school wrestling, uh, season's at?
Can you say that again, try it in here?
When is the middle school wrestling season gonna be?
Are we?
Basketball now, and then you're gonna have to come back, and then you, then wrestling doesn't have nothing, then you're gonna have to come back and discuss middle school basketball.
So Zach, when does middle school wrestling start?
For a few of the schools that have voted for it, it's gonna start the same time high school wrestling starts, which would be in two weeks.
There's not gonna be a split season like there normally is.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Well, when we get to middle school wrestling.
All right, that, that's just my, I just want to discuss one thing and then you're gonna have to use straight learning skills.
I have only made a motion to table the discussion about middle school boys' basketball.
The motion was made to table middle school boys' basketball. This is your second.
Second.
Move and seconded, all in favor of tableing the discussion on middle school boys' basketball. Take a five or say a aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion is tabled.
Can we skip ahead to nine two three one, so I can make a, uh, a motion to table middle school girls' basketball too? Give me a minute, please. You want to do it in order?
Yeah, we did the agenda, so it should be in order. All right.
So nine two two, discussing possible action on high school boys' basketball.
So I did like the, um, I just want to, my guidance from Mr. Meza, sorry, you did say girls at the top, so I changed it.
Yeah, well, I mean, so basically, it obviously plays about ninety nine point six percent. Basketball's basketball. Um, I changed, I did change a few things to toggle a little bit about the possibility, yeah. It's with our way of program set up this year, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of kids that will be doing, well, the other, I think varsity and JV are pretty, should be pretty clear cut this year uh, compared to seasons past, which will allow us to train those smaller pods. A lot of the same things that are outlined here are things that we've had to do for those two or three weeks, that we were able to open the gym in July and do workouts, so we still had, obviously, we're gonna be taking the temperature now versus in summertime, we didn't have that access to the monitor and just we could kind of ask the kid, you like to take your temperature? Yes, what was it? So I could write it down. Now we actually have that temperature check. With our two groups, that will also kind of help with that, if we could have, you know, Coach Miller's group down on the old gym, at least to start the season. That will give us a little more space to kind of see their way spaced out. Um, the hundreds, one, one point, well, a lot of that stuff is in the WIAA form that we're required to fill out, not just for practice, but we're also required to fill it out and file it with the opposing team if we are playing games. I can, by recalling that one, that's something that has to be on file before we even start. So, uh, I'm not quite a hundred percent sure how that gets done yet, but, what else do we have in there? Oh, um, so, so we talked about the locker room already. Water bottles and spots for players, and we only have two fans per player, which is what the conference is recommending. Basically, instead of having a team bench that we've traditionally had, if you watch the NBA and how they did their social distancing on their bench, you know, instead of having one role for the team bench, it's likely gonna be two or three roles and we can space the kids out. You know, instead of having one role for the team bench, it's likely gonna be two or three roles, and we can space the kids out. Uh, they'll have to be masked, I will likely have them get multiple masks per game or practice, just in case you need to switch them out. I know that Waziga and Sonic are two schools that were looking into. Different types of masks, and all that. Mitch Sternik, the ADO there, was talking a little bit about that. Uh, we already have the issue with the water, um, so they're all like, they're on water bottles. And uh, things of that nature, so. We also have our basketballs being sterilized, so one of the other conference recommendations is, is that we have two game balls. Um, so that we don't, if one gets. You know, to the point where they feel like we need to do some disinfecting, they can just pull it out, and we can put the next one back in play. My assumption is, is that the spray that we're using in our classrooms is a spray, the same one we were using in the gym. And so, uh, we utilize that to clean the balls. Um, and then also require, uh, encouraging players to ride home with parents after the game, that would be a little bit of a change compared to what I wanna talk to kids about in the past as well. And this would be something also that I would share with the team, I also, everybody has their preseason. Rules meeting and stuff like that, and that's what obviously would be something that I would share with the parents. As part of the team, uh, expectation.
What's the thought process being, I'm like, encouraging players to ride home with parents when they came on the bus?
That much less time to go.
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
Yeah.
Is there already rowed there together?
And that way then too, if there is an exposure, that, I don't think there will be, but you know, that way then, there's less chance of it, you know. That's spreading out a little too.
One of the caveats is some of the counties, I think Crawford is one of them right now, has limits on the number of spectators in any one place. So, depending on where we go and at what time of the season it is, that we might get a phone call and say, don't forget, we don't get visitors, or. So, our parents need to be able to know that ahead of time, that we don't get to control how many visitors they have on their stadium, any more than if. We have to shut down for whatever reason, we can't have people in there, so.
And that was a big, but a fundamental leak there in our coach meeting as well.
And that practice starts when?
It's a week after the girls', so I'm gonna say it's, I don't know the date, I don't have my head, but it's two weeks from Monday.
November twenty-third.
November twenty-third, that's what I thought.
When you say using multiple gyms, I'm assuming that's in conjunction with Mr. Clay and the, and the girls.
So, the girls' practice, yeah, I mean, if they have early practice, we have late practice, there's no reason why we couldn't still use the facilities.
Sure, then, um, is Mrs. Neimeyer still using the old gym? So then how is that gonna work, will have agenda to clean up afterwards, or how? Or does she have risers and stuff out, or is it just not? What?
She uses the gym, Susan, but they do not have risers.
So it's in easy enough transition?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, in the middle of the season, you know, it'll be the January, and the girls are playing middle school, and the boys are playing middle school basketball. Uh, we would have to make an adjustment off of that, obviously, but. What else would be, you know, the way the schedule's set up this year will be more halfway through our schedule by then, so. We'll obviously have to make those adjustments as we go, but. I will say also that every conference team indicated that they were at least planning on having a schedule. Having one of the board decided, um, but I know that. Uh, every team in our league had made something along these lines of COVID, a lot of this, I was like I said, comes over from the other summer. We had to come up with our recommendations for summer workouts, or for fall sports as well. There was nobody in our conference that at least I, that came up, so that they weren't planning on playing, so.
Other discussion?
Um, I will make the motion that we proceed with high school boys' basketball as. Laid out by Mr. Vazra and our Virgin Valley, other parts.
Then move to, move far, but high school boys' basketball. Your second, second, second by Mr. Manning, uh, roll call, boys.
Mrs. Blzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brisway?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Row?
Yes.
Okay, then, nine, two, three, girls' basketball on nine, two, three, one, discussing possible action on middle school girls' basketball.
Oh, I know, I should have tabled, I'll, I'll make a motion that we table this discussion till the next quarter.
Then move to table this discussion, next board meeting is your second.
I'll second it.
Second by Miss Peterson, all in favor, see if I've ever seen a.
Aye.
And an opposed? To table. Nine, two, three, two, then, discussing possible action on high school girls' basketball.
They, like Matt said, it's pretty much the same thing that we have here, uh, that I drew up. Same kind of plans, we'll be following conference ones. Every time we play a game, we'll hand them our sheet that's verified by me, verified by Zach, saying that. Covid will be as best to our knowledge, every game, that type of deal, all the disinfecting, same two basketballs, that kind of stuff. We follow the same protocols that like we were doing for football, we get filled out every day with their temperatures and all that kind of stuff, so we have our valley. With it, our plan is to change in two different like areas, I'm expecting we have twenty, I have nineteen for sure right now, I'm expecting twenty, maybe twenty-one. So, the idea is half is gonna get checked in by Miss Lovin, half will be checked in by me, my group gets checked in. Or after they get checked in, they're gonna change half of them in the bathroom over here, half, and then like the middle school one by the. Belt cooler, and then Miss Lovins can use, their group can use the locker room, just so that we don't have. Twenty girls piled up in the locker room, or like in the bathrooms, that was the whole idea with splitting them up into three different locations, instead of having all four girls. In a bathroom, which I just, it kind of defeats the purpose of six feet distance and that kind of stuff. Yes, I, I get it, that it's gonna be a little extra cleaning, but it's safer that way, and it's spread out. Um, it's kind of same, that same stuff we had with Matt's, so I'm not sure if you wanna talk more about it.
So this is pretty much the same as.
I did have one question on there, and I missed it when Matt said it. On there at Gulf Street, you're gonna ask the COVID, the COVID system checklist or whatever.
Yes.
But when I was reading it, it only asked certain questions, it didn't ask the bottom half. Uh, I, I was just wondering why not do the whole recommended children checklist?
When we use it at school, Matt?
This is what WI has, that's what they are making us use, like this one. And so, that's the one that's the, all the WI wanted us to do, and that's the one that we have to bring with us to the game.
That's the one they use for football as well, correct?
So that, I'm just pointing out, that's different than what DHS and CDC recommends that we use, so.
I would move to approve, uh. High school calls and post-season.
Your second. Thank you by Mr. Manning, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferriens?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Manning? Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Row?
Yes.
Mrs. Blzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brisway?
Yes.
Sorry, the roll call part moved in the middle.
I have one more question, so since we're virtual, does that mean we can't practice? Can practice, how does that work?
Didn't, wasn't any screening of us in our.
So we're good to start practicing Monday, even though we're virtual? Okay, I just, just wanted clarification.
Okay, uh, nine, two, four, then wrestling, uh, nine, two, four, one, discussing possible action on middle school wrestling. When would that season normally start?
Usually start after Christmas, but that's gonna go different.
It's, well, there, there, there's different ways to do it, I mean, the conference, nobody has said, their board has said, no, they were gonna start it with. High school. And the idea was right, as of right now, the WIA, from their guidance to say, no triangulators, no tournaments, just a duel. So to make it more worthwhile for certain teams, especially certain, not so much us, but some of the teams that have smaller numbers, to send the middle school and the high school. To an event. For the duel, um, and that was kind of the, the gist behind it, I know. Wrestling coaches know some of the schools in the conference, uh, you know, they have, they maybe only have four or five kids out for high school wrestling this year, so to make it more worth their while, they would maybe. If all the schools would do it, vote for it, um, which if you have, and gonna, a lot still have it on the agenda for this month, they would send both teams now. A normal wrestling year for middle school, if it would start after Christmas, I mean, I, I guess I'm gonna assume we, there's still teams that aren't in the Ridge Valley that we could find a duel against, but. There hasn't been any communication about that yet. From other schools anyway, that aren't in the Ridge Valley.
What does that affect my best, Troy?
Um, right now, it would, if our practices, it's probably gonna affect that, uh, space that we have, we, high school expected twenty-two, or high, high school around twenty-two wrestlers. Um, I guess I'm not quite sure, the middle school, I'm guessing twelve, Randy might have a better idea.
So it's a dozen to fifteen maybe, or a great amount of.
Of course, the numbers include some western shows, and they aren't all there. Um, so I guess what I'd like to recommend, I have got a building that we can use. So my recommendation is, is use, take the middle school, and what I've been, since our space is gonna be limited. Is basically for the high school, we, what I think we're gonna do is, we're just gonna use the two areas that. We have, that normally the middle school has the multipurpose room. What I'd like to do is maybe take the lighter weights, put one area, and the heavier weights in a different area. WIA is kind of recommending having. Groups of only three to four wrestlers, practice against each other, they can't practice with anybody else in their certain area. So with that kind of being said, kinda, with this building that I found, of course, we don't have a mat, we'd have to take the mat. Was okay with you guys to this building, and they would probably, only problem is transportation. Cause I, I guess I just don't feel that we're gonna have the room to do that right now.
Yeah, that's a lot of kids.
Yeah, like, see, when I type up my protocol, like, everyone who's gonna talk to, are you into wrestling, are you into wrestling, well. In wrestling, you're usually only gonna practice one, maybe one of like, one or two guys, the same person all the time. So this is really gonna come down to documentation of who wrestle who, and then separation. If we're all up in that mezzanine, it just isn't, it ain't gonna happen, like, we need to be like in both places. So, that's kind of really what we're shooting for, and I thought that the old gym. Might be in play, but apparently it's not, the basketball's gonna use that, I thought it'd be good, cause we have two locker rooms. Because you can say more than any other sport, our kids really need the shower after practice, because it's wrestling. But that's where the middle school starting right now is kind of a quagmire into the plans, because we don't have the space.
I agree, and if, if people that don't know how middle school works, they, basically, every meet they go to is. Five or six schools come together on that night, and then they pair them up and they wrestle. One tough, three matches each, so there's no singular team events in the middle school, that's what makes the middle school wrestling. A little more complicated and.
More difficult to do than what typically.
Tell what?
It's more different than what it typically was.
Exactly right, and I think, if, you know, if you're not involved in the sport, you don't, you know, most all junior high sports, you go play, you play one team, and that's. There's not a single event that we do that in middle school, that I can think of, right? Yeah, so that's what makes that more difficult.
So, so, so this year, basically, it is, if the conference recommended that, the middle school travel with the high school. We'll have that multi-team event going on with them anymore, this year.
So the middle school would get on the same bus basically as the high school and go wrestle that particular team?
Basically, your middle school is your JV, basically, tell you.
Okay, so what is your recommendation, Troy? You're saying, yes, include the middle school with the high school, or don't?
Well, we, we, we have the room, yeah, so here, my recommendation is. Take the bus, take the middle school down to this building I have, which is just, um, between Premier Co-op and, uh. St. Joseph's, where inclusive was.
But then you would still have them competing with the high school?
Right.
And then that would be another bus, they'd be on separate buses, or they would all fit on one?
It's kind of down, I mean, on a bus. I'd limit it down as well.
Yeah, I think it's one per, was it one per seat? I don't know what it is. On a bus?
One, we sit them by, seat them by families, which doesn't gonna apply here.
Right, would they be seated with their partner, that they're always with anyway? Nothing, or?
Seated by weight class.
Where the, yeah, going, um, what's the policy still on like, for middle schoolers, like, parents taking them to the event for the bus, if the busing's that big of an issue? Is it that, that opens up, I can't remember, I don't know, but.
You know, we're in different times now, my only concern in discussing that would be, is that. It would have to be not, okay, I'm taking Billy and Jimmy because Billy's dad can't go, that, you know what I mean, it's, they would have to, they're gonna do that, they're gonna take their own kit and pick their own kit up and that. But that's a different discussion, that's not on the.
And we'd have to look into insurance.
Yeah.
And then also the, we, the, the transportation to get them down there for practice, I mean, we're, we're already short. You know, I mean, that's, we, we don't have extra bus drivers and.
So, when was the high, when will the high school season start?
November twenty-third, November twenty-third.
And would it be a huge issue if we, you know, normally we wouldn't start the middle school till after the first year, would be a huge issue to put off. A decision on letting the middle school start in the middle of December?
Well, problem comes, but if the, if we're the only school to do that. Other schools decide to have their season, well then, might as well not even have a season, because it's being, and everybody to compete against.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is you guys want to be able to have the mezzanine and that.
What you normally would anyway.
Exactly right, but just for the high school, you know, and so the middle school's gotta go someplace, so if we make a decision now. I think it comes down to there is no middle school season, if, if we put it off. You at least have a chance to check out, you know, you, cause we'd have to check out what our insurance says about going down there, and those are all things, there's no way we can make a decision tonight. And that's what I'm saying, if we at least would talk about putting it off, it gives you a chance to potentially do that.
I guess, if it comes down to it, we kind of. Go roll from our conference in the middle school. Like, go to a different conference that has more kids. If that comes to that, like, we'd start later than go to different places.
And some of these schools, you know, we don't wrestle our, our conference that much in, in middle school anyways, and then some of those, I question how, how many matches we would give, period. And for the benefit of, you know what I mean, how many, how many kids would we match up against to be able to?
That's the other part of it, is bussing all these kids here up there on top of the varsity, and then there's three matches with the middle school.
Right.
To me, that's really counterproductive of having them go.
Or, it would, you know, potentially be better to, if we can get a practice place someplace else, and see what, and to run our middle school. You know, just set up single, single duo meet teams against larger schools, other places, and during the regular season. Might be potentially better for everybody all around. Because I can see, you know, just thinking about our, our, in our conference. The numbers that are in there is that, you know, there's gonna be a lot of things like that in junior high, potentially, whether you're gonna bus. Thousand, fifteen kids down, and the other school's gonna have two and three, and one of them's not gonna match. dozen, fifteen kids down and the other school's going to have two and three and one of them's not going to match up. And, you know, you do all that and all that expense where.
Probably a school like Eastoli.
Yeah.
Just probably wouldn't take the middle school. This wouldn't make any sense.
Well, you know, but what you could do is you could just schedule them like they would basketball games. You just pick your teams and you know, as you say, what teams are looking for, if you got some, um, you know, a mineral point or somebody like that, that would have numbers that would make it worthwhile.
Right.
You know, because that's basically what you do a lot now, you know, you're, you're, they're calling around and, and getting, you know, who's coming, you know, to these multi things where.
And I, I have no problems doing that. Just the one issue could be you have to have six days in between duels. So if those bigger schools that are in the area that have full teams of wrestling, their conference, they're not going to have room for us because you have to have six days in between a dual meet.
Uh, I was just going to say, we shouldn't forget that it's a co-op team and that Weston does have a facility also. So it would be possible that the middle school could practice there while the high school's practicing here or vice versa. So we shouldn't forget that. Yeah. Cause it is a co-op.
That was an excellent point that I have in my notes too, because we're different from the other winter sports. The yard co-op normally like how we go up there a couple nights a week and vice versa. I didn't know what you guys would think about that as far as transferring into another school. The half states, but I just didn't know what with transportation and COVID and what you, I didn't want to make for that note because I really didn't know what.
Well, they're planning to practice down here, aren't they? Or vice versa.
Yeah, they come down here.
Yeah.
And they should be doing the same cleaning protocols that every other.
And they're going to be coordinated. I'm assuming that junior high and middle school would be doing the same thing.
I haven't marked it, but.
But in the high school, they'd be coordinated. You would have your group, your partner group working out, right? In the high school.
And if we go up there, right now all the work, we go up there and it's together, varsity is on, well, high school's on one man, then the middle school's on the other man. I'm not overly thrilled about that idea because that's that many more kids than one domain.
I guess I would recommend the, or those schools going to Weston. Or, or just have a rotation, whatever you decide.
And one of, so middle school would practice at one school for a week.
Actually, that's what we did three years ago.
Yeah. And high school practices at the other school for that week and then switch.
I can make a recommendation without, including the middle school, um, about Weston talking to their, right? That we need to.
I guess we can make a recommendation and if they.
Agree with it or not.
Yeah. Because somebody's going to have to go first, no matter what, make a, they have their work being delayed too. So.
I guess we, I guess that's what I would recommend is high school practice at one school, middle school practice at the other school.
Starting at the same time.
Starting when the conference starts.
Then there wouldn't be the insurance issues.
Exactly. And basically it'd be the same way it is now. We're just.
Just getting, just getting, getting them up there.
Well, and we're doing that anyways during the season, you know, normally because we don't have, you know, so they're going.
It's just that now we're kind of short of drivers.
It's, yeah, yeah.
That's the issue.
Not last year, Troy, you were driving some, right?
Right.
Yeah.
We would run into an issue when, well, I wouldn't go pick the most.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's coming from the.
They're muting everybody.
Oh yeah, I just said one of the, has there been a middle school coach hired? Because I don't have any posting and I think Kenny Anderson resigned, correct or not?
Yeah.
Is Cody moving? So there has been no. I think there has been, Zach, there been any?
I haven't posted anything in the paper because I wasn't told to, so.
Zach, do you know that Kenny put his resignation in?
I'm going to have to go back and double check. I know we talked about it because of the, the conflict. We were talking about running a scoreboard. I'm just trying to, I have to go back and check my emails if he actually ever sent me an official email saying it.
Well, Weston does have a coach hired for middle school, so that would. Buy us a little.
And that would buy till the next meeting.
Yeah.
So they could start their practices and everything, but.
And we've done that before. Coaches have started and then do retro.
So you have to check that out, Zach, and see whether he's looked back if he's officially has or has not. If he has not, I would talk to him to make sure it's made official if that's his choice. And then we need to get that posted if that's the case. Back to the discussion on, first would be middle school wrestling. There is no motion. It's just a discussion at this point.
I would make the motion that, um, middle school wrestling and that they would, um, use Weston if that's, you know, going to be, since it's a co-op, they should allow that.
I'll second it.
So is the motion to start middle school wrestling?
In.
In conjunction with the high school season. Start middle school wrestling November twenty-third, right, Troy?
Right.
What was the date?
November twenty-third.
Okay.
So there's a motion to, uh, start middle school wrestling November twenty-third. Your second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Row, roll call please.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Bozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Nine two four two. Then is, uh, high school. We have your, no.
Definitely.
The recommendations and all that.
I kind of caught through a lot of them already.
Yeah.
This was W I A A. Actually, this is Ridge Valley, so.
Our is in there too.
It is.
Just for the duel. And it's a duel and that's.
I had this up basically the whole time.
Changed our numbers? Did you change the numbers?
And so then you guys will have the, the screening stuff and the temperature stuff and that, but then you'll keep track of the partners.
Who, who we have in there. And then we're both going to be in a, a play screening each kid.
Sure.
And then we're going to stagger how we end. So my next question, the locker rooms are an option? Or, or not? Because then that's going to depend on if we finish practice.
I mean, we typically, kids are pretty much that, you know, have been, are required to shower, not because of COVID. I mean, it's just because of the. Skin disease, stuff like that. I mean, it's.
We don't want to take a step backwards with health. They probably can't shower at the same time, I would guess.
It's just you seeing your staggering.
Staggering.
Upstairs will finish and then over here will finish at a certain time.
So they're distanced while showering?
Yeah. And who's monitoring that one?
Right.
You are.
I'm a vet, tell your own.
I'm not. I'm retiring then.
Yes, locker rooms are supposed to be monitored anyway.
Yes, they are.
Any other questions, discussions?
I would move to approve the high school wrestling season begin on November twenty-third as presented with the, um, policies and procedures for training to COVID and human, or safety of the athletes and the coaches presented.
And moved in by Mr. Brisboy, second by Mr. Manning to start high school wrestling season on November twenty-third. Roll call please.
Mr. Manning.
Yep.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Bozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Nine two four three then discussion possible action on youth wrestling.
Do we know?
Yeah, just in the past, we've always started, um, the, kind of like the week after Thanksgiving. Or maybe my thought was, um, just wait and go after Christmas, but I didn't even know if it was even a, you know, I mean, obviously reevaluate at that point, but I didn't even know if it was even just being presented as options to do with the youth sports or not at all, I guess. So, so parents are asking for clarification. Wrestling is one of those sports that, uh, it's a individual team, I mean, team points, but you know, it's a individual sport. A lot of parents are asking because if we're not going to do anything, they're going to take some of their kids to these private clubs, you know, Sarbockers and combat and stuff like that because that's what they want to do and that's their choice. So I guess, um, I'm just asking for clarification on possibilities because we have parents asking about what's happening. And I said, I don't even know if we can use a facility and I have no idea. So that's, that's all I'm looking for, clarification.
Discussion. Are they planning tournaments and stuff? Do you guys know?
So as of right now, there's, there's, there are, yeah, there are tournaments going, but the tournaments that are going are big tournaments. You know, they're going to be, um, there's, there's actually a Wisconsin wrestling league that was formed this year. And it's basically, you have to be a member of the league to get in. So you have like, uh, Sarbockers and Beast Cage and all these other teams, their, their private club. The only what I would call community-based club that I've seen in there, that's not a private-sized club, is Belmont Platteville. Um, they've uh, joined this wrestling league. What the wrestling league is saying is, um, basically if you go to one of these places and train there or whatever, you'll be guaranteed three matches throughout the year. And I think they're kind of setting up a dual meet format. That's something that I would entertain as an idea, uh, kind of like what, uh, baseball did rather than, I think going to large group youth tournaments kind of defeats the purpose of what we're all doing. I think we could have some practices and then maybe contact like a Richland Center or, uh, Riverdale or something and say, hey, we'd like to have a duel. Have you come in, have a duel, you know, set, kind of go to more of a high school format, if you will, where it's just this team versus this team. Um, and do that, you know, maybe if you did three in the year, get the kids some kind of bad experience a little bit. Just to give them something to look forward to. They are still having a youth state this year. It is being held in Wisconsin Dells. I believe it's March fifth, sixth and seventh. There is no, uh, in wrestling, you usually have to qualify at a pre-qualifier to go to state. They're not having that this year. It's just an open, you want to go to state, you go to state. That's kind of how freestyle rep or Roman has been done in the past. But that's what they're, that's what the WWF is doing. Other than how there's also this Wisconsin wrestling league, but I didn't know if it was even possible to do something smaller off the side that wouldn't put our kids at that level of risk, but still do something.
And I mean, and I'm, I'm just asking this, youth wrestling, that's a club, right? Do we even, don't we just allow permission for our space to be used? We don't regulate it anyway.
Yeah, what they're saying is it's a possibility to have it here. At, at this point, I would say with the way things are now, you know, maybe consider it later, but you know, not, not till after Christmas. You know, because of the holidays coming and all that kind of stuff. I think we want to try and keep the opportunities for the older kids and that, and make sure those things are going well.
Yep.
And then, you know, the same thing, then middle school is kind of the next step. And if we can sometime later get in, you know, those things. That's unfortunately the way it's got to roll, but that would be where.
So it's not being ruled out. It's just being.
Yeah. You know, we don't know what things are going to be like coming January, February, right? Maybe they're better, but at this point, I think we need to try and go forward with the high school sports and, you know, now that they're all indoor sports and see how they progress and go and the way things are going, I could see that all coming to a freaking halt in a hurry. But, you know, I think they have priority, you know, with the spacing and all that. And we can revisit it, you know, and if there's, you can't control what parents are doing, but when they're going to those clubs with them, you know, from potentially fifteen, twenty different schools, it's exactly the wrong thing to be doing now. That you would be better off to stay in your, in your school district, but, um, that's just mine. Do you say?
They're not.
Not doing it.
So no action?
Nope. I just give my opinion. Anybody else?
I mean, I, I would make a motion to table, hopefully there's space when the time comes. Like absolutely, anything we can give back to any of the kids is great. But I would, I would make the motion that we would table it for now.
We moved to table the youth wrestling. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say if I would say aye.
Aye.
So table, table. Nine three then discussion possible action on allowing seniors to leave during a pack time.
I had talked with the seniors and some of the staff and we were looking at, um, basically what some other schools have as far as a pride pass. In a lot of the other schools, they use a pride pass at lunch hour and stuff that kids can leave, but obviously our kids can't because they can't get anywhere and back in time. And we're still fleshing it out, but what it would be is you couldn't have enough, we would not let athletes leave simply because we don't want them zipping back in the parking lot when everybody else is leaving. So it's just kind of a, a, and to be honest with our seniors, over half of them are already gone anyway, um, on the school to work. But we wanted it where it would be a, um, you know, an extra thing for the kids that are doing okay in school. And that they've shown that they, you know, they can't have, um, they can't have this many discipline referrals or whatever. And also that the parent would have to sign off on it so that the parents know where they're at, at any time. And also the caveat that the parents can pull that, if we'd like to call it a pride pass, that the parents can pull that pride pass anytime they want. So I've seen it in other schools where the parents really like that. You know, that they can kind of hold that little caveat over the kids' head. So I guess what we're looking for is just the, um, okay to come up with a plan for that. And obviously this probably won't be enacted. It certainly won't be during this week and then we're going virtual for three weeks. So when they came back in a month, we'd have it all laid out.
And then would you bring that back to the board then?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're just looking for permission to have direction?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think we need this as a policy unless you guys think we do. Otherwise we'll have to go through the policy committee and stuff. But so what I'm looking for is that it'd be okay for administration to come up with a plan.
I think it's a neat idea. Many, many, many moons ago, when I was in school, they had what they called Hornet Hive, where you didn't have to sit in study hall if you were getting A's, B's or C's. And you would believe what a motivator that was, just being able to go outside in the study hall. So that small little thing makes a big difference.
Yeah, I've seen it where it's really helped at the different schools that I've been at.
Yeah, it's a neat idea.
Oh, I would make the motion that, um, administration pursue the seniors having a like a pride pass.
Yeah.
To use during a pack time.
So a move by Mrs. Peterson, second by Mrs. Rowe, uh, for, uh, administration to pursue the senior movement during the pack time. Uh, all in favor, say if I would say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries nine four then discussion and possible action on accepting donations, nine four one.
Thank you, Shelley.
Donation from Mrs. Scanlon, obviously.
Thank you.
Here specifically toward the athletic camera.
Okay.
And set up.
All right. Motion by, um, Mrs. Rowe, is there a second? Second by Mr. Manning, uh, to accept the thousand dollar donation from Miss Scanlon. Uh, roll call please.
Mrs. Bozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, nine four two donation for Kramer Brothers for a thousand dollars.
Anything? Sure, Mrs. Scanlon talked to Menno. I don't care. They gave us a nice chance for a thousand. Again, to be used toward the athletic camera and celebration act.
Awesome. I'll make that motion.
By Mrs. Bozinski, is there a second? By Mrs. Blazinski, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mrs. Rowe, roll call please.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Uh, nine, four, three, donation of water bottles from Delta Dental. Haven't they done this before? They're doing it again.
We talked about it, but it wasn't on the agenda I got last time.
I thought maybe there, so we had more water.
Yeah, almost every kid got one, right?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay. Uh, the motion by Mr. Manning to accept the donation from Delta Dental, is there a second? From Mrs. Ferriens. Monetary, so roll call please.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Nine, five, discussion possible action on snowball bids, one and two. Recommendation from the Buildings and Grounds Committee is.
So this is Patriot.
Which formerly was DNP.
Yeah, DNP it used to be, so that's that one.
That was our, that was our recommendation.
And then just for your information, this is what the other one looks like, so.
We had two this year, which was a good thing.
Yeah. And this one, I, this is my little handwriting here, but.
Yeah.
Typically.
We talked about it in finance too a little bit, at that setup by inches, you know what I mean, so one to three. So the more you get, the more they. Do, and realistically, DNP's is, you know, it's gonna take them longer to pile, but. When you work all of it out, we felt this was a, was a better plan. It's up ten dollars. Per hour on the truck and on the loader was.
Another ten. Twelve, I thought you said in finance, oh, twelve, yep, twelve.
But. We discussed both of them at length. Frank was there and his recommendation was Patriot two, they've always done a good job. And it would be the same thing on school days, when they're here blowing, they would blow the church parking lot. Like we have in the past, so basically nothing changing from in the past, except the increase in rates.
I'll make a motion to accept that, and that was recommended, I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blazinski, roll call please.
Sorry. Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yep.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Nine, six, then, discussion possible action on Lord Jim Kitchen, floor call, covering, we talked about this in. Yeah, and in, and in finance too. Basically, what this is, is while they're down there, they're taking cabinets and countertops that were in that, you know, the. Room there that they made into a office, putting that, replacing the ones down there that were in horrible condition, while they're doing that, they wanna. Cover the tile that's there that has asbestos in it. So instead of ripping that up, they've talked to, Frank has talked to the abatement people and they're perfectly fine with just covering it up, so. This is LVL, I think it's what they call it. They have two different types, the recommendation from. Buildings and Grounds is the less expensive one, but. Since nobody's down there using that right now, it's a good time they're gonna do that and do a little paint and.
Remind us as we walk out, we'll show you the new office.
So.
So this one is one thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
That was our recommendation there, huh?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation for covering up the. Cancer asbestos.
Kitchen floor. So it's been moved, go ahead with. Is that bid one? That was bid one, wasn't it?
Words.
The less expensive bid, I know that, is that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Peterson, roll call please.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yep.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Nine, seven, discussion possible action on adding another tech position.
So again, just bringing it up as a discussion point, so one of the things we mentioned is maybe even we could, so we need more help. Period. When the AL started, we had like fifty devices, and now we have like. The new ones are in. Just in case you forgot. So with that, seventy-five, you know, every single, so we have like four hundred devices in this building just for students and then staff, and you have two. If not a document carrier, I mean, anyway. He needs more help, and so we're, we'd like to flesh out a couple of different possibilities, and again, I don't like to do that kind of stuff without you guys knowing our thoughts ahead of time, so. Maybe it's somebody that works remotely and the phone goes to that person's house and they just say. Great, see the school ID icon there, click on that, your kid's, you know, number is this. Go through there, okay, if that's not working, okay, go to the lower left-hand corner, you know, we don't know what they, what they.
As a help desk.
As a help desk, maybe, so I don't know.
We discussed this in finance personnel through that, potentially it could be like an intern, you know, like from a college or something.
Sure.
Or another student worker from here.
Absolutely. Basically, they just wanna explore.
So I'll make a motion to allow admin to explore options for adding a tech position to help out.
Second by Mr. Brisboy, all in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Nine, eight, discussion possible action on accepting CESE three contract for SEL work of seventy-two hundred dollars.
Okay, so this is for the grant, we received money and we had zero advocates. So I brought it up to CESE three saying, hey, you can, is there anything you guys can do, so they do have, oh, she does gonna make copies, but anyway, it's. It's for twelve days of their time, they charge six hundred dollars a day, but Lisa Harrison would like to take this out of her way as a personal. Project, I don't know, no Lisa or not, but she'll do just about anything for us, because she likes us. So it's not even anywhere near, we had like twelve thousand in the grant for, for the person to be here working on it. And my biggest caveat was, yes, we got this grant, but I don't wanna add a whole bunch of angst to my teachers. So it's, this year is gonna be building a foundation of, what are the teachers think the kids need, and we're gonna build it into not only SEL, but all the. Workforce development and. Going to the Building the Hearts of School Conference and the Castle Framework and. Developing surveys for the county, so that employers can also say, this is what we want. A kid to graduate with these kind of skills, so it's more workplace skills, but in order to have workplace skills, it's all at S E L anyway. So. And it won't cost us anything extra. Did we already get the money, right?
No, because I took getting that, I don't know.
We're getting air around the portal, so anyway, they've been trying to give us the money. So it's not gonna cost us anything as we can out, but it's a contract with CESE, so I would like to just. Approve it.
I'll move to approve. With now, Mr. Brisboy is to approve the contract with CESE three, and it costs us seventy-two hundred dollars and we paid for our grant. Second by Mrs. Rowe, roll call please.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yep.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Nine, nine, then discussion possible action on accepting open enrollment application.
I have two, one in, one out, 4K in and a secondary out. 4K was our student book.
4K was on open enrollment before, and then they pulled her and now they want her back.
All in the same year?
Other family.
That's how this whole year with open enrollment is like.
It just when you said 4K, I was like, how long?
I'm having trouble with that exit, though. That you're telling me just took me three years.
I'll make a motion to pre open enrollment in and out.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we do, we don't have that roll call, not doing, okay. Did you second, Mr.? All in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Nine, ten, then discussion possible action on setting committee dates, first one is finance and personnel. Monday, December fourteenth at, do we need to go at six?
Oh, yeah, let's change it to six thirty.
Six thirty, that would be before our next regular meeting.
Yep.
Is there a motion to set it for then?
I'll make that motion.
Move to by Mrs. Blazinski to set the finance and personnel at six thirty on December fourteenth, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gotta get it in my calendar now. Okay. All right, motion carries. Ten, two, then policy on Wednesday, November eighteen. At five.
You guys still good with that one?
Tim, is it about to go at five thirty? I think I'll be volunteering for basketball. Oh, wait, yeah, it starts next week. Is it until five thirty, is that okay?
That's all right, I don't mind, so long as the other ladies are fine with it.
Yeah, I'm good. Let me change it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Motion to set policy at Wednesday, November eighteenth at five thirty.
I'll second, sorry. Made the motion.
Voice of Summer Day. Nope.
You were making.
I'm making that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that's set. Ten, uh, nine, ten, three, Buildings and Grounds, Wednesday, January thirteenth. We approve, we, we agreed on that in Buildings and Grounds, but is there a motion to set it for that?
Sure.
It's, and that's at, that's at five.
It's at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
It should be done.
Yeah. Okay, so January thirteenth, Buildings and Grounds.
Mr. Brisboy did the first, and I'm pretty sure I heard Mr. Manning did the second.
Mr. Manning did the second, yeah. Uh, all in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Those grounds are set for January thirteenth at five. Nine, or ten, nine, four, curriculum, Thursday, January seventh. Five.
So we already discussed it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll second it.
Moving second to set curriculum. Thursday, January seventh at five PM, all in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Next board meeting date, December fourteenth at seven PM. A motion to set it for them.
I'll make that motion.
And move by Mrs. Peterson, is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mrs. Ferriens, all in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Ten, then adjourn to close session under Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight five one C for consideration employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation data of any public. Employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Uh, will be discussed, a discussion regarding performance evaluation of any district employee, teaching staff, administrative staff, or coaching staff. Uh, will be in closed session, not less than five minutes, but it could be longer. Motion to go over to closed session.
Um, I'll make that motion.
All right, Mrs. Rowe, second by Mr. Brisboy's roll call.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
We're going hard on you.
Yeah.
We're gonna pause them.
She has, man, are you gonna shut it off or close?
No, what I do is I pause the recording. Cause then it's still going on the top.
Oh, he's done six people.
All right.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Gotta wake up our screens, give us a minute. Mine did.
Our Zoomer's running.
While I'm waiting, I'm gonna fill my Google Maps spreadsheet about the guy's school. This place offer our service. Yes, fine star restaurant, thanks for answering. Oh, wait, I can't get this thing on. Ready?
Getting tired. Yep.
Okay. Motion to reconvene and open session. By Mr. Brisboy, is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Ferriens, all in favor, signal to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Eleven, one, discuss possible action in hiring part-time term professionals, no action?
No action.
No action. Eleven, two, discuss impossible action on hiring full-time term substitute teacher.
So by full-time, we mean, all days that are in session, not a full-time teacher. And it's term, so the recommendation is, Lewis, Paul, and Parker, go ahead.
You were sorry, can you clarify?
They're not full-time because they're not, so they're.
Over thirty hours.
Over thirty hours.
So they're, yeah, but they're in-person or virtual, correct, or not?
Yeah, every, every day we have school.
Got it. Okay.
But they're not a full.
I understand that, but it's in-person or virtual, they are.
Yes, they're here.
Okay, just wants to clarify.
Every day we have school.
Yep.
I thought you said they weren't gonna work on Wednesdays.
Right, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, that's unclarifying.
Okay.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Every day we have in-person school.
Yeah, but what if we go virtual?
Just put it as Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
There we go.
Thank you.
Right.
So Wednesday, the Wednesday.
Right, in-person or virtual on those days. They are.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the way you've got, that's the way you want it?
Yes.
The wording is right?
At twenty-two, it was an hour each.
I'll make that motion. One day then.